Find a seat. It's a very crowded evening, so we may be having some standing room only. Are we ready? Okay, welcome all to our regularly scheduled October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, six-thirty PM at the Skinner Store Community Center. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Here, Jones.
Here.
Where potential.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Councilmember Stefani.
Here.
And Councilmember Edgar is absent this evening. All right, we're on item two, approval of the agenda concerning item number four, resolution of the City of Blue Lake honoring the contributions of community advocate in Blue Lake, planning commissioner Earl Eddy. I would like that postponed to November. I spoke with his wife and she's out of town and none of the family can be here and they would like to be here for that resolution. So I'd like to postpone number four, please, until November twenty-eighth. That's the only change I have. Other council persons?
I'm wondering if we might move number nine up so that Captain Cornell and Sheriff Hansel don't need to wait for us to get through everything else.
Okay, so we could move nine to four?
Yep.
Okay.
And could we also move seven up? Above.
The biomass presentation. So seven under nine?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Can I?
Any other changes?
Yeah. So you, your auditor is also here.
Yeah.
Trying to make a presentation. You also have HCOG's transit hearing also was.
Okay, so everybody has.
Humboldt thirty-fifty is also making a presentation, so I think it'd be considerate of those items as well. Moving them.
So at this point, I think we have all of our presenters, one after another. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So moving item nine to item four and then leaving everything else?
That sounds all right.
That's okay. Yeah, that's good.
Perfect.
All right, any other changes from council?
No.
Okay, anything from public? Before we approve the agenda? Okay, back to council for a motion to approve the agenda. Postponing number four and adding nine where number four is essentially.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Scholl. Any further discussion from council? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. We have an agenda. Item three is our public comment time. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the City of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay, we'll start with Marty, then we'll go with Lazard and then you, young gentleman.
Okay, and there's someone on Zoom too.
And thank you. Someone on Zoom will be fourth. And Becky, you'll be fifth.
Marty Granger, I would just like to suggest that instead of having these four-hour-long council meetings, that maybe we have two a month. Sometimes the things that are later in, on the agenda don't, you know, a lot of the people have left and there isn't a good conversation. So it's just my suggestion, four hours is a long time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Lazard.
So that's related to something that I am not sure if it's on the agenda or not because I actually couldn't find it on the website. I haven't seen it yet, but I don't know if you have the petition to oppose the biomass in the RCEA plan or not? If that's on the agenda or if it's simply a presentation?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
So you want me to wait?
Yes. Thank you.
It's item seven. Thank you. Okay, yes, young man. If you could identify yourself, that'd be great.
So, hi, my name is Reed Berman and I am a student-born member of the Humboldt Association of Tennis, or HAP. HAP is a five oh one C three-recognized nonprofit and it serves to improve the mental and physical health in our communities on and off the court. Our objectives are inspired by supporting and thriving diverse community with an emphasis on these four pillars. Youth and families, environmental stewardship, providing opportunity inequality in recognizing the importance of mental and physical well-being. We believe this will be, this will leave a lasting impact to come here today.
It's okay. It's a hard thing to do.
You're doing good.
Yeah, you're great.
Your generations in our community. We just want to come here today to say that we value the tennis courts here in Blue Lake and the parks surrounding it and we are looking forward as a nonprofit to working with the City of Blue Lake to help improve the park and the tennis facilities. We have a website, humboldttennis.org, and if you have any questions or anything that you think we could help you with, that would be wonderful. You can reach out to us there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ree. Thank you. Okay, I think we have a Zoom caller, two now it looks like. Um.
It's, it's like it's in the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Top.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think he has to unmute it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're, you're on for a public hearing.
Hello, I'd like to unmute again.
Yep. We can hear you.
Go ahead, Kent.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
What's your room? Where can I comment?
Thank you. Becky, I think you were next and then we'll take the Zoom person.
Julie. Yeah. Becky Thornton-Rigoza, I'm just here and I'm going to agree with Marty. The meetings have gone way too long and I think that the two meetings a month should probably go back to what it was before the pandemic. It just makes a little more sense that way. None of us or anybody else is sitting here until late into the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. All right, Julia.
Thank you. Yes, this is Julie Christie. I was really happy to see that the meeting on Zoom is being recorded tonight. That was my public comment. Had a lot of city comments for the evening. It was a little discouraged that with that comment, it was referred back to staff. There never was a decision made by council to continue with the recordings of Zoom, so I'd like to see if they are continuing to be recorded and archived. Also, while we're doing Zoom, we should be able to have screen share whenever we have presentations or presenters. During COVID with all the active Humboldt recordings, we were able to have screen shares, so if that's possible, that would be great. Think about my notes I already had written down. Just got back from the wilderness last night. So everybody else tonight chiming in about the length of the meeting. I don't think it's appropriate to have standing room only for a meeting that's potentially going to be four hours long. Any, any specific agenda item that are discussion-only could be broken out for a special meeting so that we're only doing action-only agenda items at the council meetings might help. And didn't see in the manager's report anything about the pre-restoration update. Hopefully, when we do the subdivision of agenda item, the work that has been done for freak is brought up and what kind of procedures have taken place to do that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? In the back and then Erin.
I have to speak about the bus at all times. That's what we're going to talk about the bus today. Okay, so should I save my comments for that time?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. And Erin.
Erin McClure. And I just wanted to say right off the bat how lucky we are to have Sheriff Hansel here. It feels like the cavalry has arrived. Anyway, it's, it's kind of an old topic with me. I'm still talking about the fact that the city's lease with my property has expired over a decade now. I've been trying to settle it with absolutely no help from our city manager or the city attorney. It did take me six calls and one visit to City Hall to get an appointment with Mandy to go over the water tank situation on my land. She basically refused to answer any of my questions and basically gaslighted me and said that I had a fascination with her and that was the reason why I had to keep getting those meetings. I can guarantee I have no fascination with her and I really would like to settle the water tank situation. I would really be happy if the city council could encourage the city to help me do that. I, and I hope this gets down in the meeting minutes because it seems to keep getting ignored, but I am asking for an appraisal, lease appraisal, and a fair market value lease agreement proposed to the attorneys that I work with. So that's about what I have to say about that. Also, I'm a little bit concerned because I went through all of the grant provider paperwork and there is, I think Kent was talking about this, there needs to be a hundred-foot setback from all those tanks. Well, on my property, there is not. The city does not have enough room on the property that they lease for me to do a hundred-foot setback. So that would mean that they would take more land for me. They're going to take more land for Peter Busman. Julie Christie, you should listen to this because you're at the same evaluate level. They could also be looking at property on your property. So hopefully that can get taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on then. Just to let you know, city council does not make comments or there's no discussion on anything from the public because it's a non-agendized item. We are moving on to item four, which is actually item nine, the Humboldt County Sheriff Law Enforcement Contract Presentation. Sheriff Hansel and Captain Cornell will be in attendance to answer questions regarding the proposed increase to the city's contract for law enforcement services.
Mayor Jones, thank you so much for having us here today. This is Captain Brian Cornell. I love participatory government. Number one, this is great to see a packed house and to be invited here to discuss this in an open forum. As we know, here in Blue Lake, you used to have your own city police department. There was some corruption issues. The sheriff's office came in, took over law enforcement services through a contracted MOU. That MOU has kind of shifted over the last, you know, ten, fifteen years and, and we renegotiated in twenty-twenty-one, November first, twenty-twenty-one to do a law enforcement contract. In the previous contracts, you had actual deputies that were here for their whole work week. However, due to our own staffing issues, we couldn't afford to put deputies here any longer. So we went to a contract back in twenty-twenty-one where you receive the same level of service as the other parts of the county and, and for a reduced fee. We didn't, we didn't actually calculate the fee. We just did a kind of a little bit less than we were charging for a single deputy to be in the City of Blue Lake. So that was in twenty-twenty-one. We charged the county or the city about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year for the contract services. And the contract services are basically law enforcement services that we would see in every part of the county. And so you have the same level of service as the county, same investigative teams, same law dispatch services, record services, community service officer, abandoned vehicle abatement. Everything you'd have in the other parts of the county, you got here in the City of Blue Lake. It's an important part of this contract that every year we look at this contract and we make sure that the calculation is appropriate, okay? And through the pandemic, we weren't able to really go do that because we had other things that we were prioritizing. I have my business manager do that this year and, and do a recalculation of services and and then it says in our contract that, that we can do this to charge the actual cost to provide such services here in the City of Blue Lake. And so what we did was to help calculate that is our, our our general fund contribution for the county is about nineteen million to do all of the county for law enforcement services. And when we look at that, that's about seventy-two thousand population for that nineteen million and that covers our whole operations. And then when you look at City of Blue Lake and, and put that into this number, that equates to about one percent, well over one percent of our county population, if we were to take on Blue Lake law enforcement services. And when you look at nineteen million, one percent of that is about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and that's based on the population. And, and so at, in May thirty-first, we sent a letter to the city basically saying we did a recompensation, computation of our services and this is the amount that is going to be charged to the City of Blue Lake to carry on the same services for you know, under the contract and our, our contract allows us to do that. A letter was served to the city and and July first was when that payment was essentially going to be started. It was, October first was when that payment was supposed to be made. To date, the payment has not been received yet, so the county, the city owes the county the seventy-three thousand. I want to personally serve Mayor Jones for that with a notice to make sure that you receive that. It is past due and I don't mean to, you know, to, to, to call the city out or anything like that, but under the contract, if, if the, the city doesn't pay within thirty days of the due date, which is essentially October thirtieth, then we can cancel the contract. And so I just wanted to put everyone on notice that that is a part of that. Of course, that's not what I want to do. It's not something that I want to do with, with the city. I just want us to be able to, to work together on this. What we're charging is the true cost of providing law enforcement services. I spoke with Mandy. I had a conversation with Mandy. We met in my office on August sixteenth. Chief Kevin Miller was there from the, the Blue Lake Rancheria and we discussed law enforcement services. And, you know, there's a lot of brainstorming about what to do and to, to look at cops grants and those kind of things. All that stuff is really important and that's something that we will definitely try and work with the city to try and do. But I have my, our own financial issues with the county, as you probably all know. And the county is looking at cutting several positions back over the next couple of years and, and so so we can no, we can no longer subsidize law enforcement services for the City of Blue Lake and, and so that the cost of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year is that true cost. And this is something that we charged, you know, similarly over in the years past. Prior to twenty-one, we were charging three hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars a year for two deputy sheriffs and all law enforcement services here in the City of Blue Lake. And so that was something that we were charging over time and I understand everyone is financially in a hardship and, and I wish there was a better way that the state, you know, trickle-down law enforcement money to small cities and small counties so we can afford law enforcement services because every time law enforcement services, you know, get pulled back on because it's the biggest expense here in the city and the county, what does government do? Local government then goes back to the voters and say, I need you to increase your taxes, your property taxes, your sales taxes, so we can afford law enforcement services. And, and so I understand that. I totally get it. And I wish there was another way because it's unfair for us to continually go back to the voters and ask for more money for, for these services. And, and so my suggestion is, and why I say with the county is it's like we have to prioritize public safety and public safety first. When you ask the public what the most important thing in any part of their community is public safety. If people don't feel safe, if people don't have, know that there's law enforcement services available, obviously there's a lot of people that get upset and, and don't feel secure and don't feel safe and then want to move to a place where it is safe. So I, I understand that. I get that. And, and so I want to definitely work with Mandy, work with the, the mayor, the city council, with the county to try and come up with solutions. But the fact is that we don't have solutions at this point in time and, and we will continue to work together to try and find ways to, 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 to generate revenue or work on grants or those kind of things, so, so we can get these, these services covered. So if anyone would, would like any, as far as further explanation of the contract and what we do and the services we provide, this contract is still in effect. At any given time, the city can opt out of the contract. They can give sixty days and they can opt out of the contract. If, you know, and, and then we can renegotiate at that point in time as far as what that goes and and so law enforcement services can be cut back. We can go to just a felony response. We can go to, you know, there's a lot of different things we can do. The city can go look at, at contracting with the City of Arcata to see if they have officers that can come over here and, and, and work. The, the Rancheria gets their peace officer power, state peace officer powers from, from me as a deputization agreement. So just going over there and asking them to perform law enforcement duties wouldn't work because again, it's, it's, it's me taking on that liability for them to come here in the city. They'd be working under, under our supervision, taking reports and using our dispatch services and all this supplemental. So, so that necessarily wouldn't be a solution. That could add to our existing services, absolutely. And I talked to Chief Miller over there about that and it's something that they can work towards when their staffing level gets, gets, gets a little bit higher. Right now, they just have him and they're looking, working on more, more tribal officers that can be cross-deputized. But I also want to bring up the point that calls for service hasn't declined here in the City of Blue Lake. Twenty-nineteen, there was essentially fourteen hundred calls for service and there was twenty-two incidents that we've responded to, whether it's traffic stops, self-initiate activity or calls for service. Twenty-two incidents, twenty-two hundred incidents in twenty-nineteen. Twenty-twenty-three, the pandemic, that kind of dropped a little bit. But twenty-one through this year, we're on track with doing the same. Fourteen hundred calls for service, twenty-two hundred incidents. That's without having two deputies assigned here. We're coming here just as much and responding here just as much. So you do have full-service law enforcement, professional services here and we are a phone call away. If there are any issues or problems, we want to work with the, the city, city staff, city manager, the public and, and try and do whatever we can to to take those on. We still have Neighborhood Watch. I know that we've, we've attempted that several times over the last six, seven years. I know we've had the pods that here in Blue Lake, but we can always bring back Neighborhood Watch and we can talk about doing those here as well as a way of, of, of trying to help with some of those public safety issues. So I'm here to answer any questions. The captain's here to answer any questions and provide any insight on, on anything we can do. Mayor Jones?
Thank you. I think what we'll do is ask the council if they have any specific questions to ask and then we'll open it up to the public if you don't mind. So my question has to do with Trinidad. What agreement do you have with Trinidad concerning a private security company that's working in tandem with you and how would something like that work?
So the private security company is not something that we, that we are contracting or are working with. They may have private security there that go and patrol their town. But what they do is if they see anything, they're calling us to respond. But it's not something that, that, that we are working with the private security. They're not ancillary duties of us. They don't have our radios. They don't, they're not our eyes and ears. We don't contract with them. We don't train with them. We don't essentially work with them. It's essentially like citizens on patrol. And, and so they could just call us, just like you, they can make a citizen's arrest and then call us as well, so. So that's something that they, if they're doing that, that's something that on their own volition and as a way of just having eyes and ears out there.
So the City of Blue Lake is very small. It's only one square mile.
Yes.
So if we didn't have a contract with you, then you wouldn't tend to one square mile, is that? But you would everywhere else? I'm, I'm just trying to get this straight.
Yes, so under contract, you know, the county services, you know, we, we would don't, the county, anything outside of municipality is my responsibility to do that as far as law enforcement.
So the other side of the boulevard, the other side of the river?
That's right.
Everywhere else, just this one? So if something happened within this one square mile, then the, you wouldn't attend to it if we didn't have a contract with you? Is that true?
So it's part of incorporation of the city. You, as a city, are responsible for public safety services. So however you want to address public safety services within your city is going to be up to you. But that's not my jurisdiction to tell you how to run public safety services in your town.
So if we didn't have services with you, you would not come to that one square mile?
Of course, we would always respond to nine-one-one calls. We would always do our best to, to, you know, if there's violent crime, those kind of things happening, of course, we would come. Just like, you know, within the City of Eureka, if they can't respond for various reasons, we would go and do mutual aid within their jurisdictions. But we would not be primarily responsible for, you know, all the public safety services that we currently in contract, so. The only thing that I'm required by law to do, okay, just so everyone knows, is run a jail, have a civil department, run court security and have an investigative division within the sheriff's office, not patrol, an investigative division. That's it. That's under state law. And, and so having patrol deputies out there is something that is luxury for the county essentially, because there's no mandate that I do that under the law. But I have to maintain a jail. I have to run court security and, and if there is an incident out in the county somewhere, I have to investigate it. So I have to have detectives, have an investigative unit respond and, and take care of those. So I have to have detectives, have an investigative unit respond and and take care of those issues. Uh but.
And if we didn't have a contract for some reason, um if we fell out and somebody from Blue Lake called you. Would you have to respond or?
I I would not have to respond. I would respond because I feel like it's the best nature of of um. Uh public safety services, absolutely. But what you're also thinking about is is all those nuisance issues. Uh the misdemeanors that occur, the 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 public intoxication, the the disturbing the peace. Noise violations that we that we currently respond to. Um those aren't public safety type issues that that I would have to respond to. Um and uh and so it's it's those kind of things too. You got to also traffic accidents. Uh right now in the city, uh you would have to, you would have to then contract through the California Highway Patrol to come in and take your traffic accidents. We will no longer take take traffic accidents within the city limits of uh Blue Lake.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So then the contract that is um was submitted is just for that one square mile. It doesn't include Glendale, it doesn't include the other side of the boulevard, doesn't include the Rancheria?
That's right.
Okay.
So go for all of our jurisdiction anyway.
So what is? And I'm 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 looking this, looking at this also from um uh fire protection issue. What is the, do you have any idea what the call volume is? For just the city as opposed to the Rancheria, Glendale, all of that? I mean, because I I get that, you know, if the one thousand popul- person population here within the city equates to. Less than one percent of the overall county population. What is our call volume? Like I can't, I can't fathom that our call volume is is that drastic.
It's not. Uh you know, we what we do is essentially just draw a circle around the city of Blue Lake. And it's incorporates incorporates most of the city there. At that point, we can um we can uh determine how many calls for service have been in that circle. And like I said, you've had fourteen hundred incidents prior to in five years ago, um in twenty nineteen. Uh that that we responded, like calls for service. Someone called us and said, there's something happening in Blue Lake, please come. And we came. There's twenty-two to twenty-two hundred total incidents, that's self-initiated activity. And so seven, you know, eight hundred more than, you know, what's what was initially reported.
That's within just the city or?
That's that's.
Or that broader circle.
That's.
That's fear, because I I I hear them talking about Liskum Hill is Blue Lake.
Right.
And I'm thinking, that's not.
That's not, that's not Blue Lake. That's what I was.
So that that is, that is that sphere. That is definitely that sphere.
A sphere.
Absolutely. So that's a part of that, but it's again, it encompasses all the same data. All the same data that um that uh that we do. You shaking your head, Mandy?
No, because that sphere is really large. When we get our patrol statistics and you're going all the way up to Titlow Hill, Chesum Road. West End, Glendale, anything with a five, nine-five-five-two-five zip code is what we get attributed to Blue Lake.
I can forward you the uh the sphere that that we just, so.
And I can pull the patrol statistics.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious, I I don't feel, I think my concern is that if we're paying. If we're expected to pay for call volume within a sphere that's not within our city. That's where I am questioning, you know, the 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 contract.
It's not based on call volume. It's based on population.
Yes.
Blue Lake has similar population, you're Redway, Garberville, Willow Creek, all the areas that we're already responsible for. But it it's and they have a similar call volume to to the Blue Lake sphere as well. So what we're saying is that the 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 cost increase is based on that bare minimum law enforcement service. Based on the population and it's the same price that those other communities are paying for their taxes.
But the sphere does not, the sphere is also inclusive of areas outside of the city limits. I mean, we are only responsible for the city limit. So if that's the contract is our city limit, then that's where I think my confusion is, is why we're. Why our contract would include areas outside of our city.
Your contract does, I'm just talking about incidents. I'm talking about incidents that occur there. You're you're not getting charged for those. I'm just talking about call volume in general, call volume in general. Because, you know, before the deputies, you know, were here, two full-time deputies were here. Now we're just responding to calls for service. Even if those calls were were less than uh by half. Let's just say there's only seven hundred calls for service. The amount that we would charge you would still be the same. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't decrease at all. The fact is that that we're responsible for patrolling and for responding to Blue Lake. And you were your answer for public safety services. And that is basically being charged three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year. As an example, city of Ferndale, similar size, one square mile. Okay, they have public safety infrastructure already in place. They have a, they have a police department, they have vehicles, they have. You know, all the radio equipment, everything in place. Their budget every year is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, they have a chief, they have reserve deputies, they have some full-time uh police officers as well. That's how much they're paying per year. And so you are paying three hundred thirteen thousand dollars for the full services of the sheriff's office. So if there is a homicide that occurs in town, if there is a major incident that occurs in town, we are the ones that are responsible for that. So we're your answer. If you would like to go somewhere else, you have every opportunity to go somewhere else. To 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 get, you know, the services that you would would like to to get. But as far as right now, again, like I've talked to Mandy, we can't subsidize the city of Blue Lake. We can't. If we were the answer to everyone's, you know, public safety issues, then Ferndale, Rio Dale would fold up their police departments and say. We're not going to pay for police services anymore and we want the sheriff to respond to all those calls. And they would save X amount of money that they budget every year. That is not possible for us to do.
So I think, like I said, again, just circling back, the thing that was confusing to me is the conversation about call volume. But if call volume doesn't have anything to do with the amount that our contract is. I think that's, those were the two disconnected items that I'm, you know, wanting to make sure I understand.
I got you. And I could send, if you have the ability, Mandy, to pull it up on the screen, I could send you the sphere. On an email, or someone can, so everyone can see it up there what the sphere looks like. It's not that big, so. If that makes a difference. Again, it, that's just a, that's just a reference.
Yeah, I mean, it does make a difference.
Takes a big difference. I mean, really, it does. I mean, we have a, we have a sovereign nation next to us, basically. And they have their own police department, but if we're covering them, then that's a disa- that's disingenuous to. The citizens of our town that are paying taxes for our city, our incorporated one-mile, twelve-hundred-person city.
I could see it if you were paying for a deputy sheriff, though spending all of his time in the the Rancheria. But what you are doing is you're paying for a share, a cost share of the four to five deputies that are at the McKinneyville Station. That are responsive to all the needs here um in uh the city of Blue Lake. So so that's how you have to, that's how you have to think about it.
We don't have the retail that Ferndale does either, so that's another difference. That's not your, that's not your problem. That's ours. I'm just pointing that out.
I wish it was different.
Well, we do too, but that's the, that's the glaring problem, the difference between those two. Um.
I have the question. Um just to to try to understand a little bit better possibly. So um the sheriff's department through the county gets tax dollars for every person, essentially, every residence, every property. Outside of our city limits. But through the county, you're not getting any money for anything within S- Blue Lake, is that correct?
That's not necessarily, you know, we we have, we have sales tax revenue, we have.
So you have a piece of our sales tax revenue?
Yes, there's a piece of the property taxes that go there as well, so there's.
But as far as law enforcement dollars and I and I, I mean, this gets complicated, so maybe I don't understand it entirely, but. We get, um I know this year we're expecting hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars um from the supplemental law enforcement services fund. Um so that's money that gets paid out in taxes by our residents and that's the part of the money that's coming back to us. For law enforcement.
Yes.
Um and presumably the rest of the county is getting monies like that and so that's going to you.
That is.
From the county directly, but uh but that money comes to us to then spend either on our own police department or or with you.
That's correct.
Okay, so somewhere in the, somewhere along there, there's, there are, there are law enforcement dollars in the county that go directly to you. And then our law enforcement dollars come to us first and then go to you.
That's right, because there are, there are services, county services that are relevant to everywhere in the in the county. The jail, okay, the jail services there. Um we run a jail that's uh that. Gets utilized for every jurisdiction. We're required by to law to do that. As well as our civil department. Our civil department will serve civil papers anywhere in the county, eviction notices, that kind of thing. That's part of our, you know, services that we provide for the entire county, including municipalities. Uh but law enforcement and law enforcement services is i- is not, we don't have. Uh a budget to do all municipalities. That's not within our area of responsibility. So we don't have money to do and to do that law enforcement services for the municipalities.
Thank you.
What about Measure Z? Yeah, citizens of Blue Lake also pay Measure Z sales tax that goes back to support law enforcement services. And a portion of our property taxes also goes back to support, you know, the through the general fund. So when you say that that the county is subsidizing Blue Lake, I think you could look at it completely opposite. That the citizens of Blue Lake are subsidizing the sheriff's department. We're paying a hundred forty-five thousand dollars for patrol, no dedicated services. And we're also being taxed for that as well. So I'm, I have a hard time understanding this idea that the county subsidizing us. When sixty percent of the call volume attributed to us, when we see our stats, is actually your county response area or the Rancheria. It's not even the city of Blue Lake. So in that respect, I feel like the city of Blue Lake is actually a really good partner in paying a pretty high. Uh rate for law enforcement services.
As far as uh Measures Z goes to general tax, uh if it was a, it was a specific tax for law enforcement services for Blue Lake. Absolutely, I I I would, I would have your same argument, but that's a general uh sales tax for general county services.
Which the majority goes back to law enforcement.
Yes, right now it does, uh but they're looking at cutting that back. So as as far as right now, uh we do get a substantial amount of Measures Z money. Those were there to uh basically unfreeze, you know, thirty-some odd positions that the county had previously frozen. Uh due to budget cuts, and so we were able to hire deputy sheriffs um through that um through that process of Measures Z. That came into effect in twenty fifteen, so.
Any further questions from council? Not at this time. Okay, I'll open it up to the public.
Great.
I'd like you to limit your comments to three minutes, please. Uh.
There's one platform or?
Please, please come up to speak so that it's recorded.
Peter Daggett.
So I just had a question about uh the cost and the population, so that. The cost is based on population. Are you looking at the population specifically within the city limits of Blue Lake? As opposed to the population on the sphere of, and then um. How did you determine that um the the population evaluation is the best way to determine? Costs sharing for 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 all of us. I mean, we're, we're close to. The city, we're not out in Hoopa, you have a shorter distance to drive and all, all, there are a lot of other parameters that could be considered. Other than just population, so I'm wondering who made that determination, how it was made and if it's really accurate.
Sure. So I I could be able, I can give these numbers, I think I gave these numbers to Mandy, um so. So based upon census numbers, uh Blue Lake population is twelve hundred and eight, is that correct?
Give or take.
Give or take, okay. Uh so that's, that's the um, that's the number that we are using. Uh the county has a population of seventy-two hundred. Um and uh so uh we determined through a nineteen.
Seventy-two hundred in the county?
Sorry, seventy-two thousand.
Okay.
Seventy-two thousand.
Okay, that sounds good.
Seventy-two thousand. Uh so the county, uh as far as population goes, um you know, we take up about ninety-eight percent. Of that budget. Uh one point six four percent, uh twelve hundred people is is what we are charging. Um the city of Blue Lake out of that nineteen million. And so uh one point six four percent of nineteen point two eight million is three hundred and fifteen thousand. So that's how we came up with that. Now, uh this is, this is a boiled down version of our budget. Nineteen, all the shared costs that I talked about, the civil division, SWAT team, all those things that, what was that? Coroner's office, thank you for including that. All those are not included in that number because it's a, it's a, that's a cost that we normally provide for the whole county. So this is the nineteen million that we, that that we, that we, that we kind of boiled down. That just talks about county services we don't offer um to to municipalities. And that three hundred fifteen thousand is is from that. Now, as far as how we came up with that, why we chose that is because we felt like that was a fair number. To um to charge uh the city. Um and based upon, you know, again, what what the county is actually utilizing. Uh we are doing, based on population, that's um and and if we're adding to our law enforcement services. Then what are we adding? We're adding twelve hundred people to our law enforcement services. And and how should that equate? That should equate to three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um because it takes up about one point six percent of our population that we're, that we are responsible for.
Are there any other public comments?
Yep.
Uh. Okay, uh Lori Ponte and then, did you have a public comment, sir? Yeah, we, okay, we're, we're, we, I'm sorry, I waved him forward.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. I didn't see him at all. All right, come on up, please, and identify yourself, please.
Just curious about how much, how much, Josh, how, what are your response time, how quickly you respond, able to respond. We are spread out with throughout the county and with with increase in the contract. Is there a few more deputies on around closer to this area? And then how does it work? Are you saying what percent of the population in the county? Is there areas that are higher crime that dedicate, takes up more resources to dedicate, yeah, dedicate more money, you can't resource to that? When if this part, when this part of the county has lower um crimes and calls.
Yeah.
You know, how does that percentage work if your, your response, you know, there's not as many calls?
Yeah, that's, you know, there's a, we have calls for service in this four thousand square mile county all over. And at any given time, our our three to five deputies and a sergeant that's assigned to McKinneyville area, they could be up in Hoopa. They could be up in Hoopa and your response time could come from Eureka. And so that's, that's the um, that's the issue of 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 law enforcement in a county of our size. With the lack of resources. And uh so yes, response time is, it should be pretty good here because usually there's at least one or two deputies available in McKinneyville area. Uh so that's definitely is a nice thing. But again, this isn't about, you know, proximity. This isn't about calls for service. This is about sheriff's office taking on law enforcement duties in the city of Blue Lake that I'm not required to do. Okay, the city of Blue Lake contracted with us uh to provide those uh uh contract services. Um if they're not happy, if you're not happy with the services that we are providing with the cost that we that we have to charge you. Obviously, you can look elsewhere and I, you know, this is, this is not something that's, you know, again, I take lightly to do. I'm not trying to gouge anyone for, you know, to taking the budget, uh you know, your over half of your budget. You know, for this, this is services that, you know, are are required and and this is something that I felt like would be a fair. Uh again, a fair price based upon, you know, our budget, based upon population. And the responsibility that I'm taking on for essentially pennies on the dollar, so.
All right, Lori Ponte, would you come up, please, and then I see there are two hands on Zoom.
Uh my name is Lori Ponte. I live on H Street in town. Um first, I'd like to thank the council for inviting the sheriff and everyone to be here to do this presentation. I think it's really valuable to all of us that are here and who can't be here to hear um the explanation as to. What the situation really is, because I don't think we've had that opportunity. Um. I work in healthcare, so I know we all have health insurance. Some of us are lucky enough to have Medicare, but we have secondary insurance. And we can't control what those costs are. They always go up. Um co-pays go up, deductibles go up. So I I kind of feel like if there's a similarity between what we're looking at for law enforcement, for the city. And what we all have to look at for personal um health services too. Um. Nobody likes to pay more for things.
Nobody likes to pay more for things, um but it's insurance um that keeps us safe. And um I, I think it's a high priority for most of the citizens in Blue Lake. What other alternatives are there uh to put forward to asking people what, what they're willing to do? Are we willing to pay more? Um nobody likes that. I don't like that. But if we are looking at our safety and um the potential of something really big going wrong and we don't have that, um I think that's a huge risk. So I would like to um ask the council to consider that risk, high risk. Um I'm, I know that money is tight and we all have to work with budgets, um but some things are more important than others. And I think the public safety for the city of Blue Lake is probably one of the highest priorities um over some of the other projects and activities that we're looking at um doing in, in the city. So again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, councilor.
Thank you. Kent Sawatsky? Yes.
Thank you. Uh Dennis Whitcomb?
Thank you. Uh Dennis Whitcomb?
Mason burned out. The uh, the suggestions I have is, as far as deterrence goes, I think uh the public, uh Safety Commission was looking into their camera network in town on the public ways. And also volunteer patrols. So this doesn't answer the question on replacing the sheriff, but it may help with deterrence. So uh that's uh just a, a couple of ideas I want to pass on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dennis. Uh Julie, Julie Christie?
Yeah, Julie Christie again. Thank you. Um I'd like to thank the county sheriffs for attending and um like their transparency and answering questions. Really happy with the services. They promote continuing services. I understand um prior um stuff that's been presented, that they're also supporting in our surrounding areas. Um I suggested in the past that we do some grassroots events to help facilitate these um expenditures. Um look what the medieval that's told, just pulled in, you guys are correcting five grand, I believe, to come there. One little portion, we can do that. I think we should be grateful to have these services. If you don't use it, we're gonna lose it. An example of that is like the Measure J tax. You know, um all our, our responders and everybody were really fighting to get a little more funding out of that and, you know, arts and heritage, culture, they got this given out. I do believe it's our responders first. And they actually were trying to get a little more. That helps us. We need to get at county level, making sure that these taxes are going in the right direction to serve the community, take the burden off the rest of the county. And having our reports back, the public safety meetings were great. We had that during COVID, a little prior to that. And I'm not writing the last buts, but this was all I know. It did get dropped after the last two murders. I'm leaving them to their way. That's concerning to me. We were supposed to have follow-ups on that and it just was dropped. Our recordings are unactionable. So thank you again for attending and I support this and I think we need to do best we can to support each other.
Thank you. Okay, back to council. This is a non-action item, so um we, we thank you for coming out and we'll continue to
Absolutely. You know what? We are dedicated. We want to work with you guys and try to find solutions. And I understand it's a very difficult conversation, very difficult um times and uh but uh we will work with Mandy, we'll work with uh whatever team you want to put in front of us to make sure that we can get this done, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Before you go, I was just wondering, um would you be available to have a sit-down um work session with um say, an ad hoc committee from the council and with Mandy? And maybe our Public Safety Commission or some of our Public Safety Commissioners?
I'll make myself and uh my staff available. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, good night. Okay, um we're moving on to item five, Humboldt County Association of Governments Transit Needs. This is a public hearing. Uh the Humboldt County Association of Governments is soliciting the community's input regarding unmet transit needs in our community. The information will be used to assist in program development, grant preparation, budget allocations, et cetera. Community members are encouraged to provide comments at the council meeting and or through HCOG's related comment solicitation opportunities. And we have a flyer that basically tells what all the cities, every city in the county um has these public hearings uh to talk about what our unmet transit needs are. This is separate from the agenda item that we have concerning uh item ten, Humboldt Transit Authority Contract. So they're, they're uh separate.
And then we also have Stevie Luther on Zoom from HCOG as well, if you want him to present anything on this item.
Oh, okay.
We need to do public comment first.
Well, we opened the public meeting. It's a public hearing. You have to open a public hearing, so.
Right.
Sorry. Did the council have any questions about this item? We, we have to do this yearly. It's a mandated through Humboldt County Association of Governments, of which I am the representative for the city. I think we can just go ahead and open the public hearing and is there anyone that would like to speak on uh our unmet transit needs for the city of Blue Lake? Yes.
I'm Sandra Bennett. I live on the corner of J and Blue Lake Boulevard. I tried to take the bus this morning. I, actually, I did take the bus this morning. And um I got to Arcata. I needed to go to the market. I put my timer on so that I would make sure that I would be able to get back, because I had thirteen minutes. I no more than got to the destination, the store, and my timer went off. I walked back to the transit station and I, the bus was already leaving. Um he was leaving a minute and a half early. And um I had to knock on the door to make, let him know that I was there for him to let me in. Um I can't get to the store and I'm sure there's others that can't get to work and can't do the things that they need to do. Um we, we definitely need some more help in, in um it, it's not working. I, and I appreciate that, I, every, everybody, I read the stuff on Facebook. I, it's, I think it's a wonderful thing that's been done here, but it's not enough. It's just not enough. Um you can't get to the store. Um I had an emergency appointment yesterday. I couldn't get there. Um with um it, it, again, I'll just say, it's not enough what's going on here. We just need more help with the buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. If you could identify yourself just for the record.
My name's Linda Smith and um I'm, I live here in Blue Lake and I work at Murphy's Market and I was taking the bus to and from work two to three times a week. And now I don't have that service, so I don't drive, um don't have license. And it's really difficult, you know, just to get that bar, you know, so. And the, not to mention going into town, doctor's appointments and shopping and um banking, anything, you know, it's just, I can't do that. I always have to, you know, beg a ride with somebody and it's hard. So I think we need more service, like I say. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Uh there's a couple of people on Zoom, I think, um Julie, did you want to weigh in on the transit?
I actually wanted to take this time to thank our Madam Mayor for speaking up at HCOG um about our transit needs. Um it was presented there and we are, we are being heard. I was not very happy to hear the sentiments at the supervisors' meeting, however, with Steve Madron being very concerned about the route taking excess time throughout the village and affecting the high school students out in Willow Creek and stuff. So we all agree we're kind of a dine and ditch situation right now as far as transit goes for the county. Um they are trying to work on having some earlier transit and help promote ridership. After COVID, COVID is very COVID, ridership went down severely for our transits that come here in Humboldt County. They're trying to rethink from that and trying to go back to using transit more. But I just want to pour a little bit given their resources now and capacities and already being concerned about corporateing us, I think we're gonna be very limited on our resources back from them. I'm just curious, as an entrepreneur lady, um does the reecharia want to sell their bus to us? You have all this dog, it's gonna be very driver and everything to go. I can, maybe something we can think about to invest in on our home. Maybe we might need to chat the resources. The town's already pretty thin and they're trying to help us out. Welcome for that, but really, they are thin and we might need to go to some grassroots. So thank you, Elise, for getting that on Facebook to try and get some right share program going for everybody. Take advantage of uh any kind of resources we can here locally for the time being. And bless you all hopefully you can get to your affairs safely. Thank you.
We'll go with Kent Sawatsky next. Kent, you're on? Or not? Thank you. Was there any other public comments during the public hearing? Uh yes, Dana? Yeah.
Please.
Microphoned, please.
Okay, so um I caused pass with a friend of mine that is very much in touch with the homeless people here in Blue Lake. And he said that the, the transit that we have from the county is completely inadequate. It's only twice a day. And it's at three thirty in the afternoon when it comes back, which is early. And um it's not on time also. We have a, you know, a decent um number of people here in Blue Lake who are homeless or carless or both. And they depend on buses to get food every day. So we need, without the bus from the um um without the bus and depending on the other bus and depending on the transit, um their needs are not going to be met. And um we need, really need to consider them because they're part of our community. So I just wanted to say that. We, we need to do something.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? I'll close the public hearing. Okay, so the way this works is your, all of your comments will be um forwarded to the Humboldt County Association of Governments as part of the record as to what our transit needs are. And we are going to discuss more of this later. But um thank you for all of your comments concerning this item.
Let me ask the question. Yeah, um do we still have our HCOG representative up there?
Oh, yeah, I think. Is it Stephen Luther?
Yeah.
Okay.
Clear.
Hi. Hi there. Hey, oh, sorry, I just have a quick question. I was looking at the flyer and I was wondering if there is an alternative way to take the survey that's not on a QR code. I know that that's kind of a challenge for some people. Um I don't know if there's not, if there's another solution or another option, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, there is. Um if you can, probably the easiest way to find it is to go to the HCOG website, H C A O G dot net. And there's a project page for the unmet transit needs. And you can find the link to the online survey there.
Perfect, thank you. Project page, okay.
I, I have a question. So how quickly um does anything happen based on these um, on these hearings? I mean, does this, does this information just go into a big report? That's going to be several months in the, in implementation? Or does, does this information affect any decisions that are being made in the next um, you know, few weeks?
Yeah, so information does get compiled into a report, the annual um unmet transit needs reported by Yeah, so information does get compiled into a report, the annual, um, unmet transit needs reported findings. And, uh, I run it through an analysis to look at the, the financial and ridership performance. These services, they qualify as unmet deeds. And then we take that to a committee, the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, who will make a recommendation to the HCOG board on whether there are any unmet deeds that are reasonable to me. If, uh, if they do make that finding, that those needs need to be funded before this, uh, Transportation Development Act money can be used on any uses other, you know, transit.
So when people have until the thirty first to comment, so will this decision be made after the thirty first then?
Yes, it will be made then.
So that answers your question. Okay, thank you. Um, as this is not an, uh, an action item, we're going to, as I said, compile this information and it is something we do every year about this time to address our unmet transit needs. And we will be addressing that, as I mentioned before, in, uh, in one of our later.
Item ten, yes, yeah.
Item ten, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we do have our auditor here and item six is our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two audit presentation. The city auditor will present the city's fiscal year audit. The county, city's accountants will be available to answer questions. And we have our lovely audit, which we all were given here at the, uh, council packet. So I guess we can turn it over to you, sir.
Actually. Hi Brett, that's our auditor.
Oh.
He's going to lead the presentation.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
Uh, additionally, we obtained an understanding of the internal controls of the city. And if we identify any claims that we determine to be a submit, penalty or material weakness, we would disclose it to you. Uh, additionally, we evaluate the correctness of the accounting policies, uh, used by the city and report any findings that we have. Uh, finally, uh, last, remember, an additional item we do is conclude whether there is substantial doubt ability to continue as a going concern is, is the. In addition to our public, we also issue communication letters to the board or to the city council. This is, uh, additional report addressed late to the city council, provides additional information about the audit. Or any uncorrected or corrected statements, we would be disclosed in this letter and any findings that we have, uh, would be disclosed in this letter. And, uh, this year we only have one finding to report. It's a timely mis-minding, the state responds. City audit speaks out within one year, year end, and this, but it is a bit late this year. That's just the one term. Like work management and the city's, uh, accountant. To be timely this year. Uh, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the audit.
I guess that really was my question was why, why was this not done in the spring when it's usually when we get our audits?
Yeah, then we, we had some delays earlier in the year and some timing issues, uh, which caused it to be like this year, uh, priority. Make sure the audit is clean. So we, it's a sizable report. It does take some time to issue. But it, uh, it is late than we would like. To get it filed timely, uh, this.
Do we get in trouble with this being late with the state?
As long as it's not consistent, um, it shouldn't create any issues. I haven't seen any issues with the state. It's when it gets to excessive two, three years, uh, is when the state went involved and come in as asking questions. Additionally, if the city, sorry, just single audit, which is a lot of veteran grants over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is required. It could the little, the state may get involved then. I'm not anticipating any issues with the state.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from council persons before I open it up to public?
I just have a question. I noticed that, um, I think on the first page, there were a couple of different dates. So there's a date of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And, um, and that was a little confusing. So, um, I wondered if you could clarify, um, in the first, uh, first paragraph of the first page, um, the letter is dated June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And it, and that date is also referenced in the first paragraph. Is that a typo or is that correct?
No, it's.
Or, or is the other, uh, January sixteenth, should that be twenty twenty-two instead? It says twenty twenty-three in the body of the letter.
It has a date of twenty twenty-three. There's that.
Yeah, that would be a typo. Yeah. So the January sixteenth would be our engagement letter date. Uh, that was the date that we sent a contract with the city. So that date is correct. We just need to update the, uh, letter date, June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two.
To twenty-three. Okay. Oh, the top, the top letter. Okay, well, the top one and in the first paragraph. Okay.
And then, um,
okay.
The final letter is dated, um, October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. So is that, um, is that, was this audit concluded just, uh, last Friday? Is that correct?
Yeah, we get those, uh, yeah. So she's the report, we need final management review, report and signed representation letters, which was not last week.
And so your portion of the, um, audit, when was that concluded? I mean, prior to the, uh, review completion.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you tell me when you completed your portion of the audit that was then sent to the city for review?
I believe, uh, we sent the first draft report June.
Thank you.
Believe me, thank you.
And then there are subsequent drafts after that, after.
Yeah, there's some back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, other questions from council before I open it up to public? Okay, is there anyone on the public that would like to talk about the audit? All right, uh, Kent Sawatsky, did you want to make a comment concerning our audit? Kent Sawatsky, did you want to make a comment on our audit?
Okay, maybe Julie does. Okay, Julie, did you want to make a comment about our audit?
Yes, I just had, I just had one commentary. Um, I, I do understand, um, having a little bit of um, compassion to the fact that it took a little time for them to get to this, um, Jackson Clinic in our whole business, in our great room to work with. Only thing that I've seen that was interesting was there was a significant, uh, difficulties for supporting, uh, during audits. And that was recently mentioned during this, but it is in the, the, uh, agenda packet. So just notarizing that.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, if there are no comments on this item, um, the, uh, recommended action is that we accept the audit as presented. I move that we accept the audit as presented. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Schulte, to accept the audit as presented to us. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes.
Can I, um, well, before we move on, can we, um, ask Scott if there's anything that you might need from us to help, um, to help in future to get things, um, done more quickly or, or I'm not sure. Um, you know, I don't know if, if, if we don't have you for enough hours or if, if you need more hours or some kind of something we can do for you to help make this process go more quickly.
Yeah, I think that the city has increased its staffing in the accounting department. So that's one thing that's going to help. Um, and Mandy and I have come up with a, a pretty aggressive schedules. We'll be working closely to make sure this thing gets done hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay.
Well, our HCOG audit was also just presented to us at the last meeting. So I don't know if it's a thing, but apparently a lot more people are finding delays for some reason. Anyway, okay, um, if there's no further discussion on this item, we're going to move then to item seven. The Humboldt three fifty biomass presentation. Um, Humboldt three fifty has requested the opportunity to present on biomass production and impacts in Humboldt County. The Redwood Coast Energy Authority, also we know them by RCEA, you've probably heard that, that stands for Redwood Coast Energy Authority, will be available to answer questions regarding local production operations and impacts on the local energy production portfolio.
So just to clarify, Matthew is not available today. He, um, is sick and has some sick children. But he said he could, um, come and make a presentation at another date if council wishes.
Oh, maybe we should have not had this on the agenda then.
He just canceled this morning.
Oh, good. Okay, we'll have to get, yeah. Thank you for your patience.
I feel like after listening to all the pressing issues.
Issues that you're facing, I, I, um, I hate to add another one to the pile, um, but at least this one wouldn't cost any more money. Thank you. Yeah. My name is Wendy Ring. I'm a retired physician and public health professional. Do you, you have the slides that I sent?
Yeah.
Can we, can we throw them up on the screen? Would it be helpful? I, I spent twenty-five years working in Humboldt, um, in a mobile clinic, serving the folks who fall between the cracks in our healthcare system. And for a while, our base office was here in Blue Lake, right across from the Lager Bar. And then, um, one thing that I will never forget is the day that a bar patron's truck came through the front wall of our office. Um, and right into the playpen where often, but thankfully not that day, um, coworker's child, uh, would have been. So nobody was hurt, but it's just the kind of thing that you just never forget. And I left medicine to devote my life to climate action because I feel about climate change every bit as much alarm as I felt seeing that truck come crashing through the wall. And I'm not alone in that. In the public health world, climate change is the biggest threat, health threat of the century. The California Medical Association has it as one of their top three issues this year. Um, and just like a truck barreling down on us, extreme heat, wildfires, drought and diseases are advancing inexorably, threatening all of us, but especially the most vulnerable members of our community, um, unborn babies, children, elders, Native Americans and other minorities, uh, low income people. The difference between the truck and the climate is that it's not a surprise and we still have time. Uh, but the window to do that is closing. And with our county's climate action plan, um, back on the drawing board, the prospects of us doing our part to cut emissions by twenty thirty is getting really slim. So I'm here representing not just three fifty, but fifteen other community organizations uh, from this community to bring your attention to one giant, great, big, juicy, low hanging climate fruit, um, that we could pluck by twenty thirty and also dramatically improve our community's health. And that is stopping the burning of mill waste for electricity. Um, those of you who have lived in Blue Lake, um, through the, through the, um, operation of the biomass plant know what I'm talking about in terms of benefiting community health. So can you change the slide for me, please? The purpose of a renewable portfolio is to increase the production of non-climate polluting electricity. But in the case of RCEA, forty percent of the renewable portfolio and fifteen million dollars a year that pays for it is going for another purpose. Just change the slide. The biomass comes from the Humboldt Sawmill Company's plant, mill in Scotia. Um, on average, about half of every redwood sawlog ends up as waste, um, which gets burned in the biomass plant, which is part of the Humboldt Sawmill's operation. Slide. So why is this a bad idea? There's really four reasons. It's not cool, it's not clean, it's not just, and it's not necessary. So when I say not cool, what I'm talking about is, is carbon. In this comparison that you're looking at of carbon emissions per megawatt hour from different sources in California, you can see that woody biomass is by far the largest source of carbon emissions. Those are figures from the state. And the next slide, um, is our local power plants. And if you compare, um, the Scotia biomass plant carbon emissions with those from the PG&E plant, even if you include all of the upstream emissions from escaping methane, it's three times more coming out of the biomass plant than the PG&E plant, even though the PG&E plant produces three times more electricity. This is a problem that gets worse over time because biomass plants lose efficiency with age. This one we're talking about is thirty-seven years old. Um, and you can tell it's, it's really past its generally appreciated useful life. Um, you can determine the efficiency of a biomass plant by looking, or any power plant, by looking at something called the heat rate, which is how much fuel you have to burn in order to get out that kilowatt of electricity. And eat just between the last twenty years, the efficiency of that plant in Scotia has dropped fifty-three percent, which means that you have to burn fifty-three percent more wood, which produces fifty-three percent more air and climate pollution just to get out the same kilowatt of electricity that you would have gotten in two thousand and one. And that's only going to get worse as we go on.
Is that because the plant is degrading?
It's, it's corrosion.
Yeah.
From what, from what I understand.
Yeah, because Blue Lake Power was supposed to only be a thirty-year plant, you know, and it started in eighty-four. Yeah, because Blue Lake Power was supposed to only be a 30-year plant, you know, and it started in 84. So you can see that.
Yeah, this is the same vintage, the Scotia plant is about the same vintage.
So the, is, is there a lot of escape of pollutants from the corroded metal or what are we looking at?
Well, we'll, we can get into this a little bit later, but I mean, I, some of it really actually is just bad maintenance.
Oh.
And some of it, I think, is just corrosion of whatever of the turbines or I'm not quite sure, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah.
But, but basically in terms of climate impact, there's over 800 tons of carbon dioxide coming out of those, that plant every day. And that starts warming the planet immediately. So it takes 40 some years for new growth to reabsorb that from the atmosphere. So even if on some long scale, you might consider that climate neutral, it is not warming neutral. And we don't have 40 years, we are in a state of emergency right now. Um, we've just passed the hottest summer in recorded history and la, and last month was the hottest September in recorded history. And in the next decade, we're about to pass, can you hit the next slide for me, please? We're about to pass six global tipping points um, in terms of, in terms of melting sea ice and, and, and other things that could put us to a situation where climate change is irreversible. So that time element is why major or environmental organizations like the Sierra Club and the National Resource Defense Council say that burning biomass is irresponsible and could push climate, climate change past the point of no return. So biomass is also opposed by health organizations because it pollutes the air. I like to talk about the air pollution issue in two categories, legal pollution and illegal pollution, because biomass plants are allowed legally to pollute more than coal plants. Legal pollution limits are determined by the EPA and are part of the Federal Clean Air Act. They are not based on health. Um, they're determined by the best that these inherently dirty biomass plants can do. The EPA takes the cleanest 12% of plants, it takes the average of their emissions, and that's what they allow biomass plants to emit. And that turns out to be more than they allow coal plants to emit. And we all know that coal plants are pretty unhealthy. So this is a comparison right here. Um, the red is the PG&E plant and the blue is the biomass plant in terms of different types of pollutants that are emitted. And again, this is, we're talking about a plant that emits third, one-third the power and five to 15 times more air pollution. So when it's operating in compliance with the law, it emits more than 1,500 tons of criteria pollutants each year. Um, of these fine particulates are the most hazardous to health. Um, they cause respiratory and cardiovascular disease, cancer, adverse birth outcomes, increased hospitalizations and premature death. Our Humboldt County Health Officer calculated that pollution from the Scotia plant is responsible for seven to eight emergency room visits every month by people living in Riedel in Scotia. And they're not the only ones affected because particulates, as we know from wildfires now, can travel hundreds to thousands of miles.
I think that was the next slide.
Yeah. So there's a, the EPA has a tool for policymakers to help them understand the, the costs of doing things that make policy changes that, that increase or decrease emissions. And I took the Scotia biomass plant's emissions and put it in the model and came out, it came out with a dollar figure of three to $7 million in health damages every year from the plant's pollution. So that's why the National Association of City and County Health Officers and the American Public Health Association, the Lung Association, and even our own Humboldt Del Norte County Medical Society oppose the burning of biomass for electricity. Now let's talk about the illegal pollution. Um, because that, that is another part of the problem here. We cannot count on plant to operate within those limits that are set by the federal government. So all of the laws about pollution coming from the plant are enforced locally by the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District. The EPA doesn't come here, the California Air Resource Board doesn't come here. All of it is delegated to this agency, which has very small staff and serves three counties. Um, they are the ones who issue the permits, monitor the emissions, ensure compliance, um, and negotiate settlements when, when the rules are broken.
I'm familiar with them because we, we, uh, we told them about our biomass plant when it was spewing out ash at one point.
How much did they help you?
Actually, they were very helpful.
That's good.
They were very helpful. They immediately slapped them with a, with a warning about it and they had to come and clean. I think they cleaned people's cars and did all kinds of things they, you know, so they were actually.
Well, it ended up, it ended up becoming a huge settlement. Um, but the problem is, is that it takes a long time between the time that a violation happens and the time when the air district generally does anything. It can be months. Um, they are still working on issuing violations for something that happened a year ago now. Um, so how do they know whether the plant's following the rules? Well, one thing they do is called a stack test and they pull some of the exhaust from each of the three smokestacks at the plant and analyze it to see how much pollutions are in it, pollution is in it. Um, Will Breiger, who's a form, who's an attorney who used to work for the EPA and the California Air Resource Board, told me anyone could pass a stack test because it's scheduled. And so they'll take their cleanest fuel, their most experienced operators. Um, and even if they are like hugely egregiously violating environmental laws, they can often pass a stack test. So the most important thing for protecting the community are these continuous emissions monitoring systems that actually, you know, approximate minute to minute in real time, how much pollution there is, because a stack test is only done once every two to three years. So it could be a long time, something could go wrong and you wouldn't know about it for years. So those, the monitoring systems only work when the results are reported promptly, when the monitors are measuring accurately and when, and when the air district is interpreting them correctly. Um, I did a six-year review of records from the air district and I was shocked at what I discovered. Um, starting out with the Humboldt Redwood Company's first bid for the biomass plant in which they claimed that they only had one air quality violation and were in good legal standing. And it turned out that they were withholding 12 months of monitoring data from the air district that they hadn't even submitted and the air district hadn't done anything to obtain, even though it was supposed to be given to them every month. So when they.
Unified Air Quality Management District, you're when you're talking.
Yeah, yeah. And, and when they finally got, a year after, they finally got all this monitoring information, there were over 700 violations, exceedances of the federal limits for emitting pollution. But the contract got signed anyways with RCEA. Um, and since then, the monitoring problems have just continued. Um, the plant never did the quality assurance that the federal government requires to make sure that what the monitor says is what's actually happening. And the air district was only binging the plant when their emissions were over 20% opacity, which is a measurement for particulates, when the EPA limit was 10%. I fixed it, I mean, I got on their case, they're not doing that now, but, um, it was this, all of this was just appalling to me. So just to, just to give you an idea about what this means, um, last year in September, they did one of those stack tests, they took out the sample and they found that two of the three boilers had more particulates in it than, than the federal limit. One of them was more than double. Um, and at the same time that was happening, the continuous monitor read everything's okay. So it had been two years since the stack test was done. Um, and for all we know, that amount of pollution was coming out of that plant for the whole two years because there wouldn't have been any alert system with the monitors not functioning as they should. Um, the air district still has been issuing violations, there have been over 100 during the time that it's been contracted, that RCEA has contracted with the biomass plant. And you can see the plant from this map is right next to the Eel River. And there's also been over 37 violations of the Clean Water Act for contaminants running off of the, the biomass plant and, and into the river.
Yeah, we had a mad river right next to ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so far we've been talking about federal law and a class of pollutants called criteria pollutants. Biomass emits another class of pollutants called air toxics, and these are regulated by the state. Um, these cause things like reproductive problems, uh, cancer, asthma, endocrine disruption, um, neurodevelopmental problems in children. And, um, and the state has a program. Can you switch me there, um, called the Toxic Hot Spot Program? It's a four-step program. Uh, facilities measure and report how much air toxics they're emitting. Um, the air districts stick that into a computer model and come out with a prioritization score. And if the score is high enough, they have to assess their health risk to the community. Um, if the risk turns out to be high, they have to inform the community and lower their emissions. And if it's medium, they get on a schedule where it's done every four years. But what I discovered when I went to do this record review was that the, they hadn't done, the air district hadn't done anything about requiring those health risk assessments for over 20 years. So this is what you see when you go online to their, it says it's way, the emissions are way above the district's own priority levels, um, but yet they hadn't done anything about it. So so what they, what they do, the score, um, that priority score I was talking about, went from two, 79 in 2000 to almost 6,000. Um, and you're looking there at, at, um, a graph of different pollutants, different air toxics that were being emitted. So this is really important because it, by the time you even identify this, the state has by statute, every, every step of the way, from finding a problem to resolving the problem. The air district has so many months, the facility has so many months. Um, and so from, by the time that you, from, from even just getting an inventory that shows that emissions are reduced to actually having the plant reduce the emissions is an interval of seven to eight years when things are working well. Uh, this is particularly unjust, um, to the children at Stanwood Murphy Elementary School, which is only three blocks from the plant. Um, 32% non-white, 74% economically disadvantaged. And we're talking about toxins that can, can decrease their intellectual capacity and learning ability and affect the rest of their lives. Um, the other, on the right-hand side there, um, is where the American Lung Association in their state of the art report, I'm sorry, state of the air report that they put out every year, um, enumerates all the people in each county who are at risk. And you can see that the numbers are pretty significant. Um, they do overlap. So it's not, you know, there's some of the people who are poor are also elders or some of the people who have asthma or diabetes also have something else. But it's a significant percentage of our population who are, who are extremely vulnerable to air pollution. Not to mention folks in other countries in the global south who are suffering already the severe effects of climate change, even though they did little to contribute to it. So this is not really necessary. Back, you know, way back when, um, I mean, when I first moved to Humboldt, there were TP burners.
Yeah.
And, um, and, and burning the mill waste at a biomass plant is way better than burning it in a TP burner. Um, and you will steer, still hear people say, who are supporters of biomass, well, it's better than burning it outside and it's better than putting it in a landfill where, where it would have lit methane. But both of those things actually are illegal. Um, and we have much better options now. So this is, you can keep going there. The best of these return, return the organic material to the earth, um, either as wood fiber mulch for recovery after wildfires, as biochar or compost applied to agricultural lands that, um, pasture land that you see there with, which looks greener on one side than the other, um, is part of a, an experiment that was done in Marin. Um, and they, they found that if you put even just an inch or two of compost on, um, on grazing land, you, you sequester carbon more than what you put in because it stimulates photosynthesis, which is actually pulling carbon dioxide out of the air. It increases productivity for the rancher. And, um, and holds on to water, so it causes, it gives some protection for, um, when we're in drought times. And then there's also the options of using, of using the mill waste to make something else, like pressed wood pallets or insulation, which are both things that are done in other parts of the country. Another alternative is gasification, which is different than burning and produces, you can produce hydrogen, biofuels and biochar. This is actually happening around the state in other areas that have wood waste. And it's happening around the country, um, as well. So this, this is something that, that is an option, definitely an option. The air pollution from gasification is dramatically less than the pollution from combustion. So the one on the right is combustion and the one on the left is gasification, so way cleaner. Um, it does emit about the same amount of greenhouse gases, but because if you're making some, if you're making a fuel that can substitute for a heavy carbon fuel like diesel, for example, or jet fuel, um, then if you're looking at the net instead of just what comes out the smokestack, if you come out with less climate pollution that way. So the biomass that's in RCEA's renewable portfolio is not cool, it's not clean, it's not just, and it's not necessary. RCEA made a promise, they passed a resolution in 2019 to provide 100% clean power by 2025. Um, and then they went back on their promise and extended the biomass contract to 2031. Now, all of the violations that I told you about before, um, make it possible for RCEA to get out of that contract early. Um, it concludes a provision for early termination if H, if the sawmill violates environmental laws or misrepresents its, its compliance status, both conditions have been met. Um, what's at stake here is 120 million of our rate payer dollars that we're, that we could be spending on real clean energy and 2.4 billion tons of carbon dioxide if we continue that contract to 2031. So, so what you would hear from RCEA staff, if you bring this up, is, well, somebody else will buy it. If we don't buy it, someone else will. Um, and that's true, the sawmill can always sell that power elsewhere, but we're paying $68 per megawatt hour, which is about $20 more than we pay for, than the price of solar now. Um, and if RCEA drops them over pollution violations, that's going to be a big reputational hit. They are not going to be able to get $68 per megawatt hour. And the less financially rewarding it is, the more of a push to get them moving on some of the other things like gasification that they have considered and decided not to invest in, because why should they when they're already getting lots of money for the status quo? So there is a shortage, RCEA will also say, well, we can't back look, backfill, um, with other renewable energy. There is a sort of a temporary shortage and that has caused some increases in prices, but those prices are leveling off now. And there is a huge amount of clean energy in the pipeline that could use our financial support. You can, that, this is what's in the pipeline in terms of clean energy for, for a CISO. So we're not asking you to do anything today, but Blue Lake does, is part of RCEA and this issue is going to come up. And we wanted you to be as well informed as you could possibly be about why there are better alternatives than biomass. So thank you for your time and attention. I would, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Ring. Um, Elise, you are our representative to RCEA, so you probably, or this, this issue has been brought up to you.
I have, I am, I'm aware of the issue. I'm also aware of some of the, some of the complications and some of the, um, I'm also a healthcare professional. Um, so I appreciate what you have to say there in that perspective. Um, but I know it's not an easy, it's not an easy problem to solve. It's not a, it's not a, a super simple decision to make. So, um, I'm sorry Matthew wasn't here today to, to talk about some of that.
Well, I think, I think what Matthew has said is we can't do it right now because we can't buy the energy and someone else will buy it instead. Those are the things that Matthew says, because we, we had this conversation numerous times. There will be plenty of clean energy before 2031. So the question is, do we want to sit this out and let this contract run its course? Uh, do we want to at least have RCEA say we're not going to do anything after 2031? You know, there are choices here and there will be other clean energy available. Question is, you know, do we sit here and let the climate warm and let the kids in Scotia breed? Question is, you know, do we sit here and let the climate farm and let the kids in Scotia breed? We do something about it.
Thank you. Were there any questions from counsel of Dr. Ring?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone?
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any? Okay, protocol, protocol is that this is not a back and forth. Okay, when, when the mayor opens it up to public comment, then we'll have our public comment. There's no questions or comments from our council, so I will open it up for public comment. Joffrey?
Thank you. So I'll just give you a little back, bit of background. I went to Humboldt State University and studied environmental resources engineering with a focus on energy. And we toured three of the local biomass plants. And I guess what I want to say is, I'd like us to consider the manner in which we make decisions. And there's something, I'm sure you've heard of precautionary principle, which is that, say you're like doing something that's got a certain amount of risk to it. You look at what, what am I getting from it? And what is the risk that this thing will happen that I don't want to happen? And then if it happens, can I recover from it? So if, in your, and you're making your decision, you're thinking about, um, with the biomass plant in particular, the health, the public health, you're considering the possibility of global warming, which would actually increase when you sell biomass as renewable energy, you are increasing global warming. Now, I think it's widely believed that the global warming actually, uh, is a natural process that we're just going into. It doesn't really have anything to do with humans. I don't believe that. I believe that there's a lot of science that would indicate that that is not true, that actually there's huge impact and the risks involved are things like mass movements of millions of people into comfortable white communities. And, um, you know, millions of people getting diseases that we haven't seen for thousands of years. And, you know, all, all these coastal communities, some of which are very close to us, suddenly losing all kinds of real estate and wastewater treatment plants and things like that. So that's a pretty big hit. And I guess what I want to say is, if we're gonna make a decision which has an inherent risk in it, let's consider the enormity of this. And say, okay, so even if we think there's only a 20% chance that it's true, that carbon dioxide causes global warming, if it does, that's a huge hit. It affects everyone very deeply. And I believe it behooves us to do everything in our power to slow down the production of carbon dioxide. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment? Julie, would you like to make a comment on the biomass issue?
Yes, ma'am. I'd love to. I've been sitting at this ago and I appreciate Zoom very much. This was also a topic at the supervisor's meeting today. I was surprised. No comments back to that lengthy discussion. Perhaps none were privy to that. One Humboldt speaker did bring up how the Forest Service wouldn't, couldn't release estimated what the uncontrolled forest fires caused by brush and forest debris started by lightning and live lines fires. So just keep that in mind. I know our presenter hinted to that and that probably had a lot more cause, just saying. The compost from the mills are not productive. The decomposition period is too lengthy. It was mentioned we could use it for ag. I'm ag lady. I know my husband hauls it every day. Can I throw that on my fields? No, it will go to China. You do admit that the fuels need somewhere to go at least. So be careful with statements that are filled with emotion versus facts. Corrosions from what you understand with a question mark, that's not fact. When you say you think, that is not fact. We want to talk illegal pollutions. Does China care about the carbon pollution of 12.7 billion versus 7.5 billion here in the U.S.? Like Rio Del, listen to their meetings. They're not discussing this. And if they are, please refer us back to that. We'd like to hear what Rio Del is actually saying. And PG&E has already said they can't supply enough. Air quality has been up to date with my knowledge on these mills. As far as they can, they gotta go somewhere. I mean, we need a solution. I understand it. But is it to ship it to China? And that's where it's going to go. So we need to work towards a solution with the resources we have to become self-sufficient with energy. And I will also use precautionary principle. We're going back to the basis of this is what we have. This is what we can do to work for our future to be renewable energy. And maybe it's not the right path at the moment. We always need transition period. You just can't cut that off and keeping a economy going. And then have all these other things just bloom on their own naturally, organically. They need to coincide with each other with the transition period. Hope everybody can realize that and work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Council Watzke?
Hello, I would like to reenter into Julie Giffett. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you know, major concerns, I was in supervisor's chamber today, which Julie observed also. Many people, in my opinion, I won't speak for them, but we, we don't recognize that, uh, food reduction and turning that into biomass produce energy in a controlled situation is way more beneficial to, to having mother nature do trouble.
Oops. Here we lost.
Did you act, we lost.
Mexico.
We have somebody here in the audience.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand. My name is Martha Walden. I'm, I'm from the state of 350 Humboldt, like Wendy is. I'm just wanting to make a statement and supportive for presentation. It's probably a little redundant, but it's brief. 350's position on biomass is that burning wood on a large scale should be avoided unless there's no other option. For instance, when woody, woody debris cannot be feasibly transported out of the forest, best option may be to use curtain burners. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong information. Okay, for instance, reducing fuel loads in the forest produces biomass that often can't be transported out of the woods. In those cases, the best option may be to use curtain burners. Biomass plant in Scotia is a totally different case. Mill waste is like 97% of what it burns. They are not bringing old fennies and other facilities out of the forest because it's not economical to do that. Now, so the sawmill, it doesn't have the burning space and it'd be better for all of us if they did. And we can't stop them. But RCA, which we're looking up to for climate and environmental solutions, can stop financially supporting wind and greenwashing that electricity. Many people, um, they really do have the impression that burning wood for electricity is an environmentally good thing. No, it's not. It's, it's not good for the air or the climate. And it definitely should not displace, um, clean renewable energies such as solar and wind. So this issue of greenwashing really matters. Incinerating biomass to make electricity is a booming, um, business. Unfortunately, Humboldt Sawmill Company doesn't cut down trees in order to burn them, which would be even worse. But other companies are doing exactly that. So, um, as we've shown tonight, burning wood is terrible for air quality as well. So our plea is for RCA to disassociate itself from Scotia biomass plant and encourage it to adopt a better idea for wood disposal, such as composting or gasification. And the composting really might be the best option. Um, the county is looking at possibly in a few years, building composting facility here because of 1383 composting on our organic food waste. And then the mill waste would make a great companion with that. So that could be like a really good solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, if there are no more public comments.
We got one.
All right, it looks like. Oh, did you get Kent back?
Yeah.
Okay. Kent Swatzke, you would like to, uh, weigh in on the biomass issue?
Hello, Kent Swatzke. Sorry, I went away there. I redid I was back in and I could be led out of the waiting room into the meeting. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, um, I did wish to finish my comment. Right now, the current situation is that, uh, this power company down in Humboldt, how recovery is just horrendous to haul their waste out of the area all the way to biomass thing, I think in Anderson or something of that nature. Can you imagine how much that costs? A lot of our biomass has been, as you've mentioned, uh, in, in, in South maybe ripped off to China, which has a gigantic carbon impact. To have current technology, which has been developed by SHOT and a very good experiment down here, right on Blue Lake, we have to read whole, like, cells and energy, has shown that this can be a clean, efficient and effective manner to generate power and eliminate the, uh, cars thrown in our woods, same things. Like the, the map was presented earlier here. They have not been able to protect it. We have, we had a very bad biomass in here. And very quickly here, my communication with, uh, Royal Cardinal, with the Water Board, Jay, have fallen into the, with, um, sorry, I've been out of the office, I've been out and around Blue Lake Tower in town. Certainly have both strong waste and liquid waste need to be cleaned up and properly disposed of. We, we have a group in office that is working on the property, care of the concrete. And, and he said that he went on to mention that there was a, you know, that's horrendous as far as the violations. That doesn't have to happen. I mean, you have a very thankful, reputable company because, uh, you know, it's, 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 Frank Wenzel. Now, well, no, I think they can do a top-notch job. And it's way better, in my opinion, uh, if there was a way to spread it out there and just get rid of it. They wouldn't be hauling it up to Anderson. I think you have to go over the top of that log tree. That would not, it's, it's not, can you speak on this? Nice, long, we don't work. You know, cleaning up a forest, turning the whole globe forest, doing so and, and getting whatever we can. Whether it's burning waste, every manner is based on.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no more public comments. Did Dennis try to speak or his hand was up? Oh, okay.
He may have raised it accidentally.
I think so. Back to council for, um, any direction to staff?
I had a question of Wendy. Before RCA started buying this power, what was the plant doing? Were they still burning it?
They were shut down for a while. Uh, because PG&E stopped buying it. So they, they had a period of time when, when PG&E said, we don't want, we don't want it anymore. And the plant was actually shut down and it went through a couple of changes of ownership. And then Humboldt Red was bought and started it up again.
And they run their, um, they run their mill on that power, correct?
They do. But that, and that uses about a third. And then the other two thirds there, so.
Just as an aside, um, some of the, uh, board members of RCA are going to go on a tour, um, there next week. So I, uh, hopefully will be able to attend and, and go through the plant. So I'm eager to see what that looks like and, uh, what's going on. And I, I have had some conversations with some folks, um, who know a lot more than I do about the issue. And it, I don't know how possible it is, but there may be some changes. That could happen to make it a better, better run plant. I don't know, I don't know how possible that is or what the feasibilities are there, but, um, but there are a great deal of difficulties going on right now in terms of, um, requiring clean energy. I don't know if you're aware of it, but RCA has a contract with a huge solar farm in Southern California that has been delayed in starting by like two years. So, um, and actually going out and looking for more, uh, renewable energies that are solar has proven to be nearly impossible. So, um, right this minute is a really bad time to find other sources of energy.
Yeah. Do anything, but if you saw the graph that I showed you, there's tons of clean energy that will be online before 2031.
Right. And some of it's actually right here. There's going to be a plant on Foster in Arcata. And, um, and RCA is going to buy every speck of power that they can generate. And, uh, and RCA is looking into, um, doing some, some plants of their own. You know, since, uh, the plant out here that was supposed to happen on Hatchery is the investor backed out of that. But RCA is talking about, um, finding ways to do it, um, themselves, right? And, uh, and generate more, um, more power here locally to, to make, um, our grid more dependable and, and see where we can go. So, and, uh, RCA has an MOU with the city of Blue Lake, um, to, to investigate and, and, uh, see what can be made of the PG&E interconnection that exists here at the power plant. So, um, hopefully we're going to have some great things happening here in Blue Lake with RCA in the very near future. So we're all kind of, you know, fingers crossed and, and hope for the best that we're going to make, make a difference real soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming. So there's no action or direction on this item?
Correct. Correct. Not at this time.
Not at this time. All right, um, that was item seven. Well, item eight. Uh, the item that is titled exclusive negotiating agreement with Kenneth and Tasha Eisner for city-owned assessed parcel number. Noted, Tasha and Kenny Eisner have contacted the city regarding the potential purchase of sold, or commonly, sorry, church, as the city corporation yards. The Eisners have met with the city manager to review the zoning for the parcel and the related legal documents. The Eisners are proposing to enter in an, into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city of Blue Lake to further explore development options for the parcel. The exclusive negotiating agreement is a mechanism by which the owner and the potential developer can explore development opportunities exclusively for a designated period of time. Any future proposal to purchase the property from the city would be brought forward to the council for consideration. The exclusive negotiating agreement does not bind the city to a future sale, but does require that the city negotiate in good faith with the potential developer in the event that they present a project and offer that, and an offer that meet the objectives of the council and the related zoning standards. And we have a draft of the exclusive negotiating agreement. And, um, there is some consideration and cost recovery as identified in the exclusive negotiating agreement.
So I guess the Eisners are not here.
They were going to be on Zoom, but I'm not seeing them. So if you want, I can give you a little background on, um, on the Eisners. So, um, Tasha and Kenny Eisner are the owners of Humboldt Sanitation. I believe they're also part owners of, uh, B and B. Tasha's brother, Tapas, operates that business. They now operate Blue Lake Garbage and they have expressed a lot of interest in Blue Lake. And, um, especially when we transitioned over to the opportunity zone to look at, um, development opportunities that would include, um, housing, mixed-use development, um, recreation. They, their plans and ideas are very similar to, uh, what Dan and Lacey Comer had brought to us for the corporation yard. They really like the idea of that recreation store. They like the idea of having some housing above the stores, um, or storefronts to, to bring in additional revenue and to balance out investment.
That's, I wondered about that.
Yeah, so they've, um, they've been, you know, paying a lot of attention to. Uh, yeah, so they've, um, they've been, you know, paying a lot of attention to uh, what's been going on down to the Powers Creek District, um, some of the projects. Um, we've talked at length about investment opportunities. Um, they're looking to diversify their investment portfolio uh, outside of the sanitation business. Um, they have no interest in um, in doing anything sanitation-related on the parcel. Um, so uh, and obviously, we have zoning that, that precludes, precludes that. So um, they had gotten ahold of me a while back. Um, I shared with them the appraisal document that we had prepared for the city corporation yard. And um, they reviewed that document information and came back several months ago stating that they were interested, still interested, even though uh, the price point is, is pretty high. I mean, it, it did appraise in the uh, mid five hundred thousands. Um, so that um, that price point didn't scare them off. Um, in the meantime, we've had a historical report done on the building just to make sure there's no historical value. Um, and that was paid for from the EDA grant that we received um, for the uh, for the city to evaluate recreation economies in the Powers Creek District. Um, and that came back that there was no historical value to that building, just because it was from the nineteen fifties. Um, it was the old machine shop, but you know, after a period of time, things start to take on values on different, on different levels. Um, so Tasha and Kenny got ahold of me uh, a, a few weeks ago and stated that um, they're still interested and they'd like to move forward. They had already reviewed the draft E and A that we had prepared for uh, Dan and Lacey Comer. Um, it's very similar language, this came from the city attorney. Um, I know some members of the council have been through this um, process when the Comers came forward initially um, with their interest in the parcel. Um, so this process um, identifies negotiating parties. And in the past, we also had added the um, the mayor to those um, negotiations. And that's something that the council could do as well, but um, in the, in the absence of that, um, it's uh, recommended by the city attorney to have the attorney and the city manager be part of that so that we can have those fluid conversations. Um, obviously, our city planner and engineer are a big part of those discussions, looking at infrastructure and development potentials, zoning, um, setbacks, um, all the things that go into evaluating a project. Um, so we're bringing that forward to you tonight for consideration.
I'm really excited about something happening down there at the corporation yard. They're not afraid or scared off by the way it looks right now because that's a concern.
It's, yeah, I, I mean, I always, I mean, half jokingly, but not really jokingly, say that, you know, the city is probably the worst tenant in the Powers Creek District, unfortunately, just. Um, but that's kind of the nature of a corporation yard as well. But it's also probably the most, one of the most developable parcels and being a corner lot and being directly connected to um, new development that's taking place and investment. We really do need to transition that. Um, we need to do that not only for the city, but also for the other property owners down there. Um, so you know what it's like when you, you know, you're, you know, you have a nice home and your neighbor maybe doesn't take as good a care as you do. Your property value does go down because of that, and that's something that um, is a consideration in transitioning this property over.
So it'll need sidewalk groups and gutters.
Absolutely, any development will have to meet all of the development standards.
Yeah.
So where, where would the, where would the corporation yard go?
Yeah, so we've been evaluating that for quite some time. Uh, when I first came on board, uh, you know, we were looking at these parcels. Initially, the council had all the parcels listed for sale. Um, and we did pull those off the market in order to do some more evaluation and do some appraisals. So in that process, we did look at where we could relocate the city corp yard. Um, it's possible that we have existing properties that the city can uh, locate um, equipment and have staging areas. You know, we have property down at the wastewater treatment plant that can hold some of that. We will also be taking over control of the um, the current uh, biomass plant. And that's a twenty acre parcel, and that does lend itself to having a component of that parcel be um, identified for, you know, maintenance equipment and things. We can also downscale our corporation yard by a lot. I mean, that's, that's a historical corporation yard that has a historical legacy of stuff and stuff that doesn't have value, but stuff that accumulates. And on any given day, our public works crew is removing stuff from sidewalks and, you know, taking things that have been left or dumped. And they always go to the corp yard because that's where we have to stage things until we can get them out in dumpsters. So a lot of what is there is not necessary. I would say probably a good sixty percent of it is not necessary um, and could be um, easily disposed of and allow us to have a more efficient and smaller footprint corporation yard. Even the, the trailer that Public Works works out of is well beyond its useful life. And it's something that we're already working through with some of our grant funding agencies to look at replacing that with a different type of um, either like a contractor trailer or some other structure because it's, I mean, it's a double-wide trailer that's still on blocks. I think it still has wheels attached to it. I mean, it's just, it's well beyond, you know, what we need um, to hold on to.
Can I ask, um, this mid-five hundreds, that's the value as is or after everything's?
No, that's the value as is.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's looking at, that factors in, the, the value has, on the parcels has gone up with the zoning. So as you add opportunity for development, um, those values start to increase. And it also starts to increase based upon interest um, and other investment in the district. So as we start seeing new infrastructure, new investment, new development come forward, those property values start to also increase.
Okay, and so apparently, we're considering selling rather than leasing, correct?
That's something that's up to the council to consider. Um, this has always been a property that I had recommended selling. I think it's a small parcel. Um, it's difficult for the city to be a landlord.
Um, how big is the parcel?
Uh, it's a little over, what's it like, an acre? I think there's a parcel map in there. There's two APNs, and just so you know, I think one of the APNs is actually a tax parcel line, and so it, it kind of misconstrues it a bit.
I don't have the exact. I mean, we still have control over the property with its zoning. So um, you know, this is a piece of property, and I've always been a proponent of leasing our property rather than selling. But this is a piece that I think because it's so attractive to a buyer and I'm so excited about possibly getting a retail space in there that would sell bait and tackle in the wintertime, recreational items like pine knots and whatnot, or in summer, plus a little market maybe, that I, I'm actually entertaining the idea of, of actually selling.
And I think you can structure, I think you would want to structure a deal to ensure that you get the type of project that you want. Um, that was something that we looked at with the prior um, developer that, you know, we, the, we would recommend that the city wouldn't sell that property until either a certificate of occupancy was issued or you were substantially far enough along in your development that you were ensuring that the type of project that you went in thinking you were get, we're going to get is what you end up getting. You know, you don't want to sell something upfront and then have someone flip it, you know, and sell it for something else. So there's a process and a mechanism. Um, that can also be really helpful for investment as well. If someone doesn't have to put up, you know, the full purchase price, maybe at the beginning, that they can um, defer that or um, make payments towards while they, you know, raise capital for investment or development potential. So it makes, essentially makes you partner to the project, um, which is also exciting and gives you a little bit more of um, a place at the table when you're starting to look at all of those development scenarios.
So I know that the Eisners aren't here, but have they given any indication of what they would like to do with?
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of interesting, like a lot of these, um, the people that are interested in developing down there, they're all somewhat connected. Um, a lot of them are connected through the mountain biking clubs or different types of recreation activities. Um, so Dan and Lacey, um, you know, they were, they were very interested in this project. They're still very interested in developing in Blue Lake. In fact, they had actually put in a bid um, to buy the Mativer Brewery, um, the Delarte uh, parcel. And they were um, just ready to close on that deal when, when a, uh, I think a sale on there, and it was a contingency sale. They were selling a commercial property in Eureka. Contingent upon that sale was the purchase of the brewery. So they've been, they have been trying to invest. At the time that this project appraisal came out, the interest rates had also gone way up. And the property actually appraised for much higher than I had even anticipated it appraising for. Um, so that was a little bit of um, that put a little bit of a slowdown on that interest. But the interest is still there. In the meantime, the Eisners had come forward and heard about the project, heard about the Comers' ideas um, and thought that, you know, it was a really exciting idea to have kind of a recreation store investment with some, with some housing and possibly some areas for some other smaller development to go along with that. And so they came forward and said, you know, if that property's still available, we would be interested in developing something along that same scenario. Um, and I've had subsequent conversations with Tavis from B and B, who's also very excited about the RV park idea, um, is also looking at, you know, how his property fits into the development scenario. And he's assured me that, you know, you know, having toilets there is not necessarily our future. Um, and that property starts to become a lot more developable as these projects start to transition forward.
Would it be possible to hold this item until the Eisners can be here and talk to us about what they would like to do with the parcel?
Um, it's up to council to, to make that decision.
I personally would like to hear from them about parcels, about their plans and ideas.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, well, then I would motion that we um, that we reschedule this item to another meeting when the Eisners can be present. Do you want a second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second, sorry, sorry.
Motion made by Elise Gaffoni, second by Angela Shaw, to postpone this item until Tasha and Kenneth Eisner can be at our meeting. Is there any further discussion from council? Is there any public input on this item? David? David, could you come up to the microphone? We are being recorded.
Thank you.
David Glenn, um, let's have a couple of questions. One was, was just in the way for the time, and I think we've been tied up to give them time to look ahead to the considerations.
Is that in the contract?
It's, yeah, it's, it would be part of the exclusive negotiating agreement that would be developed.
I'm not sure, is that, so how long was that for?
We don't know. It's part of, it would, it would be part of the discussions to develop the agreement.
Part of the negotiations, yeah.
Well, yeah, only ever think that I would, I'm gonna encourage you to help that council member be part of the negotiating committees. So, no, 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 no favor of that.
Thank you, I fully support that idea as well.
Uh, any other public comment, Lori Ponte? And then we have some people on Zoom.
Great, Ponte, um, so I, I fully support what David said about um, having a council person on, on the discussion for the negotiating agreement. Um, have the Eisners, is the question, have the, or what if Storyland doesn't happen? I mean, what if that project doesn't happen? Because the last council meeting, um, I believe, Wendy, you said that it wasn't really a project yet. It was um, a proposal going out for, for developers. And I don't know if that's happened yet, if, if Peggy's gone out, the themes were um, potential developers or investors. And um, what if that doesn't develop? So I guess that's kind of my question too, um, because it is all potential. Um, it's a potential idea, but it's nothing that is um, set in stone yet. So um, I, I guess I would like to know for the Eisners and for anybody else that's looking at purchasing or leasing property, um, if this project, this large project doesn't go through, how that affects um, investors and developers?
Thank you for your comment.
That's a good question, and um, more time will tell. Hopefully, we'll um, we'll get more of that information as we go forward.
I think though, that what we can see is that there's already a need for, for people to buy bait and tackle and recreational items with or without a recreation, or without an RV park there. You know, we have fishermen and we have recreators, whether or not we have that project.
That's true. I keep wondering why somebody who wants to open a bait and tackle shop doesn't snatch up that Delarte property and, and use that big uh, area that they used to have class in for a store. That seems like a perfect place for a store.
That was what Dan and Lacey were doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's one point six million dollars. It's not just.
They just dropped it to one point three.
The rents in that building, almost pay the mortgage.
Yeah, but the selling price was one point six million, they didn't.
With current interest rates, it's pretty high.
Okay, uh, we have two other persons on Zoom. Julia, did you, Julie, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, and I'd like to thank everybody and um, council and tenants and public for hanging in there. It's really great, it's a big agenda. But I just, um, going to my notes for this item, I concur um, with our prior speaker, you know, um, we only got brought up of, in an alluding way at the last planning commission, that was how long ago? When the Russo's property was brought up, I had some public um, comment on that because there was some commentary in there that they wanted some roadwork to the adjacent property, which is the pork yard, to be incorporated. And I asked if, you know, the Russo's would be in compensation for that, or if that's, you know, how that was gonna work. And they just alluded, you know, at the last Public Safety Commission meeting, that someday it could go up to bid. And we haven't had a planning commission meeting since, or thereafter. And I'm just kind of curious, you know, this offer was only given a few weeks ago with some weak verbiage. And I'm sure that was a very expensive lease purchase agreement that was in that agenda packet. And I'm just curious how it developed so fast. Um, who are these people that are interested in the property at the industrial park? That's been alluded to all the time. And, you know, I just am curious, like, why not put their names out? I don't even think that Humboldt Recology was in the packet. And what about a mention at the economic development meeting, um, you know, for the creek? You don't want to be alarmed, the vegetation was all taken out for surveys. And maybe I heard that wrong, but during my public comment, I asked to have kind of a little bit of that within this presentation because you guys just can't be out there just tearing up the creek every time you feel like, I'm sorry. We, we've gotten away with it this long, but it's, you just can't keep doing that. And I, I just feel like this is getting thrown at everybody again, that's curveball. You know, you have these little like pictures back in the little, you know, Taylor Way thing back in the day. You never had your master plan done, get the master done, plan done, we'd have water issues fixed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is that Kent Sawatsky? Okay. Kent Sawatsky, did you want to talk about the project of the corporation yard?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You have many of the concerned prior speaker. Uh, I have been tracking it, I don't know how many of you um, have been, you know, receiving the appraisal on this property. With the trade you act, only about five hundred fifty, if you can recall. You might need communication with local farmers to uh, clean up and bring that property, just generally to develop with million dollars or more, if I recall. Um, which is a lot, a lot of money. Um, the association we have here, people, members of Blue Lake, what they have to, and it's a house, now that violation, people, putting on the negotiation, so that we're represented. This, yeah, he was the first hand on some gauze before the council. You're not always the people that, yeah, we're getting the air out there, some people should be on there, represent, members of Blue Lake, this is for a lease sale. Um, it was quite disturbing, was negotiated with, with the Danco project, with an empty, a ninety-nine-year lease for a dollar and this, if there we had any sign of real economic development, gentle with our income coming in. To stand why someone was wanting to build in Blue Lake at this time, because it was tied. Um, Delarte's having problems, uh, the other store there, the Instagram store, they're closing down. So, for those of you who have a dream or a hub for development, and this is all gonna happen. They keep crashing, it's just, that is the opposite direction. And if you're used to your downtown center, uh, we can lie to bring that in, but from the city, this was transportation, being self-employed. We have a reputation for having two, called murders, uh, don't throw away from these projects. Um, I highly recommend that you are, be sure that we don't end up with a Danco agreement on this. And I would like to, 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 city council members who are willing to participate. And I would like to, 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 city council members who are willing to participate in this issue. Public's not happy with how these negotiations have gone before. Time for some transparency, and, and time for a fully integrated project, before they come in last minute to be approved. And that's major concerns for all of us out there. Thank you for what happened on the game. We don't approve them, we probably never will, so uh, probably won't even happen. Anyway, thank you for my chance to kind of help you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments? Okay, back to council. We had motion by Elise Gaffoni, seconded by Angela Shaw, to postpone this to our November meeting. Do you see any problem with that happening, Mandy? Okay, do you think the Eisners would be open to coming to our meeting?
Yeah.
Um, we'll go with the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? No.
I think we should move forward.
All right, let's move on. That passed three to one.
Oh, did you vote no?
I voted no. Yeah, I think we should move forward on this. Um, we are now on item 10, Humboldt Transit Authority Contract Authorization. And Humboldt Transit Authority is providing transit services in the city of Blue Lake as part of their east and westbound 299 routes. Humboldt Transit Authority has proposed to contract with the city for a transit stop at City Hall and to contract with the Blue Lake Rancheria for a transit stop at the end of Charton Road. This service fills an immediate transit needs for the community and allows the city to continue to pursue micro transit options. As part of this process, the city manager is requesting council authorization to negotiate a contract with Humboldt Transit Authority in an amount not to exceed the adopted transportation budget. And this is transit money that we get from Humboldt County Association of Governments in the neighborhood of about $32,000 a year.
Yeah, we usually budget about 32,000 for uh, purchased transit. And in the past, we had provided that 32,000 to the Rancheria to partner with their transit program. Um, so Humboldt Transit Authority for this segment of the route, um, it's about $15,000. Um, it, I would like to try and negotiate um, some additional service out of that route. I'm not really sure how much we can get. I know the Saturday service is a little bit shaky. Um, so I'd like to tie that in um, to this contract to be able to put some resources towards that, because I think um, Saturday service is beneficial. Um, we have ran Saturday service with Humboldt Transit in the past, and we had such a low ridership that they actually discontinued it. Um, but I think, you know, having, not having the Rancheria service um, puts this at, you know, a, a greater need for the community. Um, we definitely need to look at micro transit. Um, we've been looking at options to uh, maybe purchase some transit, maybe either through the um, senior transit program or um, there are some other programs out there that um, that possibly could fill that gap. Um, so we did put out a survey uh, through the resource center and the city to try and gauge, you know, what are people's needs? When do you need transit? What type of transit makes sense? I think there's a big need for people to get to Glendale, to get to Murphy's. But they don't want to sit at Murphy's for three or four hours to wait for another transit bus to come through. Um, there's a need for people, especially our senior population, to be able to get to McKinleyville, um, Valley West, and possibly to Arcata, to the larger transit center, um, so that they can fulfill some of those, you know, basic needs for shopping, doctor's appointments and things. Um, that won't be fulfilled through this portion of the contract. But I think that that's a very um, niche type of transit. Um, that's, I think our population will be better served if we can look at something that's uh, very Blue Lake centric and utilize those dollars to purchase transit times that people actually need it.
I'm concerned about the 20 students that are trying to get out here to Arcata High from further east. Is this, is this adequate for them? Is this working out?
So.
So far?
So I haven't heard that there's any problems with this. So there's a very tight timeframe for these buses to turn around. So there's, there's about up to, I think, 24 students that come from the Willow Creek Hoopa area to go to Arcata High in the morning. And they use this eastbound and then the westbound route to get to and from school. So Blue Lake is on the eastbound route in the morning with the students. And so they have a small window to be able to get off the road into Blue Lake, circle back and get back so that they can get the kids to school. Um, that's really their main focus, but it seems to be working. The transit's been running, it runs multiple times a day. Um, I see it every morning, afternoon, and even in the evenings, coming back on its uh, west or eastbound route. Because it comes right in front of my house, so I get to see the big bus coming down. So I, I haven't had a chance to talk with Greg to see how the ridership is. Um, I haven't seen anyone necessarily utilizing it. Um, and I'm hoping that we can get those numbers up, and that may just be, you know, a, a bit of marketing and then also just looking at what the micro transit needs can fulfill, so that someone, so like Sandy had said, that she, you know, had a really quick turnaround. I wasn't quite, I didn't quite understand the 13 minutes going somewhere.
Go to the store. She's trying to get on a bus. I had a long chat with her last week about um, trying to get to town to go to the store and get back on a bus and come home without having to spend five hours in town. And so really, that's just, there's, if you ask for a drop off in Valley West on the way in, you have about 35 minutes to run across the street to Ray's before they pick you back up. Other stores in Valley West aren't open at, you know, 7:50 in the morning. So um, so you have just, I mean, that's like, that is, I mean, she just proved that um, that going to Safeway on that first bus and coming back is not possible. So um, it seems like we have a really major gap in the middle of the day, where possibly if people could take the 10 o'clock uh, bus into town. If we could come up with something in the middle of the day, say somewhere between 12 and um, and 1:00 or 1:30 where people could, you know, go to town and come back, at least if they had to be in town for a couple hours, they could take the 2020 bus in the morning. Then they could get back home by 1:30 or 2 o'clock, and they don't have to be there for five hours.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we have to find the gaps and fill the gaps.
15,000 sounds like a lot of money um, for, for HTA, for what we're, what we got going on right now. When we don't, what, we probably only have about 20, 25,000 left of our 32?
No, we have, we have around 30.
So we've only paid 2,000 in the first quarter to the Rancheria?
So, I mean, this, I mean, so transit's really expensive. And no one's going to provide us transit dedicated to Blue Lake for 30,000 or 60,000 or 80,000. It's, it's a lot of money to operate a transit. And so with our 32,000, looking at the best way to leverage those dollars. You know, this, this route gets, fills an immediate gap. It gets people to work. It can get people, kids, I mean, we already have kids going to school. It's not your, it's not your transit for just running to Murphy's Market or just running to do, you know, going to Safeway. It definitely does require, if you get into town, it's, it is a longer stay in town. But it does get to people, it does get people, the majority, an opportunity to get to a major transit center where they can get to Eureka and other places.
So how soon do we have to do a contract and?
Well, really soon, because otherwise they're going to just continue this service.
So, and they, do they have any stats for us, yes, about, yet, about ridership?
Um, I'm assuming they probably have some numbers, but it, we haven't, I mean, it hasn't been going for very long.
Sure, sure, but can we, can we get them to wait one more month and give us more statistics?
I don't know that we can make it wait another month. I mean, we, we literally went and, you know, pleaded our case. They got us on almost as an emergency item to try and get something coming to Blue Lake so that people could, you know, get to work in the morning or get to town, you know, when they needed to. Um, there's not a lot of options. There's not a lot of additional transit that comes out here. But I also need to get a better feel for what those transit needs are, because we did put out the survey. We have been trying to, you know, ask people, and we've only got, I think, 10 surveys. And half of them didn't, don't ride the bus. So they were just saying, well, we need transit, but we don't ride, use the service. So we've had received very little feedback, so Molly and I are trying to look at, you know, she's working with like her senior group to, and, you know, coffee club and trying to get a better feel for when people need it, because I think it's not, it's not an, a regular need, like an everyday need. But we might be able to fill a gap where it's maybe a Wednesday and a Saturday that's more of a dedicated route. So people can get to Murphy's, they can get to Safeway and not be stranded for, for multiple hours. But for the everyday transit person who needs to be able to get to a major transit center, this fills that gap.
And we have those students that cannot use the Blue Lake, the Arcata High bus, because they're not in the Arcata High District technically. What they've gotten was some kind of an interdistrict.
So we have students from Blue Lake that are riding that bus?
No, no, if you live in Blue Lake, you can get the bus, because Blue Lake is in the Arcata High School District. I mean, my grandson has taken the bus. It comes.
Willow Creek students that are going to.
These are people that have got, these are students that have gotten interdistrict transfers that are east of us. They're not technically in Arcata High District. They should probably be going to Hoopa High, but they are choosing to come to Arcata High.
Right, but that's not our deal. That's, that's part of the existing, the existing route before.
But it's, it's giving the, I think the importance of that student user group is that there's a bus coming to Blue Lake. There probably wouldn't be if that user group wasn't there. So it's a pretty critical user group, because we don't have enough ridership to make it. I mean, we've been trying this for years. The Rancheria tried to make a go of it. And even with their ability to have transit, tribal transit grants and get buses and everything, they still can't, couldn't make a go of it. So we really are at the mercy of, you know, the larger system that we're just able to kind of come in on the coattails on.
Well, my concern is that we, that we spend the money that we have to work with, and then we find out that this really isn't working for our riders and that we have to do something else, but now we don't have that money. So maybe we could, maybe we could contract for them, with them for a month or two at a time and then reevaluate?
I don't think that they'd be interested in contracting for that short term. I think you should at least do a year. Because it's, they're trying to base schedules and drivers and routes. And, you know, it, it was, I mean, they worked really hard just to even evaluate this route. They sent a driver out the same day that we made the call and said, hey, we just lost our transit. Can we get in on anything you have? They sent out a, the bus that day. A special bus with a special driver, just to drive around to see if their big buses could make it through the community. Um, they weren't able to make the swing around City Hall, but so their stop is now on the street. And they're barely able to make it down the turn from Roderick to Charton, but they're making it. So it's um, it's, but it's a, like I said, it's a tight timeframe, and they're, they're doing us a favor at this point. And I think they, everyone at, you know, the HCOG meeting and the HTA meeting was very supportive of Blue Lake and was really concerned about the loss of transit, but our ridership numbers are so low that it, we, on our own, we don't, we don't really, we're not feasible.
Sure, I understand.
And at the last HCOG meeting, as Julie referred to, we had a, a big study done on our county about transit needs for this county. And Blue Lake was not mentioned at all. So I asked that the, I asked that the uh, report have an amend, amend, amended paragraph that Blue Lake is in need of transit and should be considered. And there's also a JPA, Joint Powers Agreement, that you have to get into if you want to get into Humboldt Transit Authority on a more long-term basis. So this is still in the short term, really, when you think about it. And they're looking at even having no fare. There's some, there's some creative things going on with uh, transit.
Well, and everyone had really suffered with transit during the pandemic. I mean, ridership went way down. Transit programs lost a ton of revenue. And they still, their revenue is still, you know, backfilled um, by a lot of different sources. You know, when you're trying to provide something affordable, it's not always feasible. So, you know, like I said, with the amount of money that we have, you know, we are not viable to run our own transit system by any means. And we're not even viable to, you know, make it lucrative for someone to come out and provide us an additional service. But we can jump on something that's already existing, because there is, you know, a, a population that's riding and is coming so close to town that it's not that big of a financial impact.
So this, you, so are you asking for 15,000?
I think it's going to be closer to 17 with the Sat, to try to keep the Saturday uh, route.
Okay, and that's going to cover us for how long?
That's the year.
And fiscal year, so through June?
And it gives us just some ti, like I said, it fills, it fills a need, it doesn't fill every need.
But we've never really been perfect. Every time we've had, you know, in the 12, 15 years that we've been contracted with the Rancheria, we've had people come out here and said, could you have something on the weekends? Could you have something later in the evenings? It's never been really perfect. Um, are there any other questions from council?
Nope.
All right, I'll open it up to the public then, yes.
I need to say, I've been, I've ridden the bus for years um, back and forth. I rode it from Willow Creek out to College of the Redwoods for nursing school for, and to Humboldt State for years. Uh, I commuted back and forth to work. I took the bus occasionally. So I'm very familiar with the route that Mandy's talking about, um, with the high school kids. I will tell you, it is absolutely miserable to ride that bus, first thing in the morning with all those high school kids. And honestly, the schedule for that first, um, that first bus, if there's any possibility, if you were going to contract for something, um, you, you, first of all, that, that schedule, you can't get to work on time. But the 7:10 bus that would, I would catch here in Blue Lake, I just barely made it to town, downtown Eureka to get to work. And I was usually five minutes late to work. Um, I would just have to say, I took the bus today and, and have to get an exemption, you know, because they're trying to increase ridership. Um, but I was usually late to work when I took the bus. So this, I don't know who can get to work on time with a bus that gets to the Arcata Transit Center at 7:50 a.m. I guess just people who work in Arcata perhaps. Um, so if you are going to negotiate, and it's mostly for people who are wanting to do shopping and appointments and stuff, maybe consider that second run, run number three, um, that uh, leaves Blue Lake. That would maybe come through Blue Lake, um, a little around 10 o'clock in the morning. Consider that time instead of the earlier bus.
This is all part of it. These, all these routes are included.
All those routes are included? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know that. I thought we only had the high school run. Um, but that, that was one of the factors why I, I actually stopped riding the buses, that um, sometimes I would miss the bus, even though I was there at the scheduled time, was just the timeframe. Um, and much like Sandy was talking about, you know, you get there, you know, earlier than the scheduled time. Um, and sometimes the bus would opt not to go to the stop. They would take a different route. And I'd be running down the block trying to catch the bus, and I have the benefit of, of having a vehicle as a backup. But um, you know, for somebody who's really counting on that, you know, that's, that's not an option. And um, and then also, you know, catching your connecting buses too, oftentimes leading to Blue Lake, we would not, I wouldn't catch my connecting bus. And I find myself trying to, you know, call somebody I knew who lived in Arcata to, you know, see if I could catch a ride with them the rest of the way into work. So it was um, it was something I was trying to do um, to be able to ride the bus. But uh, it, it ended up being a lot of work to be able to make it work when the buses didn't run on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Is there any other public comments on Zoom? Julie?
Thanks, guys. Thanks for being patient with me, always chiming in. I appreciate it. But um, my, my son's with the Northern Humboldt School District. He actually goes to McKinleyville High School. So that allows the bus service through the Humboldt um, district in the mornings, but not in the afternoons, which is fine. I'm just curious, if a solution to kind of like help out with the burden with the high school students um, in our eastern district is perhaps we could coordinate with the um, school district that those kids that are relayed onto their system here in Blue Lake at the same time. Perhaps or something. I'm not sure if that's really a solution, but just a thought. Because we do have a relay thought where the district already is coming in with their full bus this year. And also having a system, system coming on the same exact day. So just a thought to get out there. I don't know the situation, but I just want to put it out there for an idea. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Kent Sawatsky? Kent, you'd like to weigh in on the transit system?
Hello, can you hear me? I've got a need to do it this time for you now.
Yes, we can hear you now. You wanted to speak on the transit system issue?
You know, we, we kind of, uh, uh, our relationship with the tribe, uh, Blue Lake Ranchery for many years. Uh, we have a systemic problem in the city itself and cities, uh, uh, staff. And it's caused this, this, this was certainly a relationship. And we see that with them not participating with the fire district. Um, we see them not contest litigation with mention of going down and controlling that. And, and then with the, what, what, are you aware of exactly why they might have a negative attitude? Uh, and, and why we have this systemic problem? And I think it's things relevant to this topic and any other ones where we're dealing with the tribe. Is that, you know, are you aware that they made applications for sort of a lot of hookups that said he would die? Or they may stop the, uh, desire for, it's been a year and they haven't, they were fought. Can we correct systemic problem here? We're gonna continue to have a, a lack of a working relationship with the local people we should be working with on so many topics. So, I, I, uh, I reached, uh, that, that problem. I don't know how to fix it. And you can actually change your, uh, uh, things. These are not even in the meeting. I don't get staff, I don't, I don't think he's in the meeting tonight. But anyway, I think we're gonna talk about it a little later as far as stuff, people who, that have working relationships, continue partnership and not have those hours.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other, uh, Dana?
I have a question, and that is what if we had our own bus? You know, a van, would that, what, how would that, how much would that cost? Is that impractical or impractical?
It would, it's not very practical. It would cost many, many times more than the amount of money we have at this time.
Are there any other public comments? I'm, I'm hoping with Erica's issue that this helps her with the other, um, the other times that they're available. As far as the issue with the school, Julie bringing that up, that is non-negotiable. They already have enough problems with their busing that they can't coordinate from what I understand. Changing anything on that. So, um,
What is the route? What are, what are they offering for fifteen, seventeen thousand?
So they're offering, we're paying for the, it's like seven in the morning, ten in the afternoon, three.
Seven and ten in the morning?
Three, seven, ten and three.
Seven forty, ten twenty. Um, it goes back out, it goes back out east at like, after three, and then one more time. After five. Okay, I think. I just had it up, but I put it away. Well, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we need to do it because it's what we have to work with. I would motion that we go ahead and, and, um, contract with HTA, um, but I would, um, I would like to say that I don't, I would hope that we wouldn't have to, uh, enter a contract for more than seventeen thousand dollars so that we have some residual that we can use for, um, some other possible transit.
So the motion is to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Humboldt Transit Authority for transit services. Contract amount not to exceed the city's adopted fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget for transportation services.
Yes, but that's thirty-two thousand dollars of which we have over twenty-six thousand remaining. So, um, I would think that, you know, if we blow our whole,
So your motion is to keep, put a cap of seventeen, is that what you're saying?
And then if, if that's not possible, to come back to council.
Right.
Yeah, so my motion would be to go ahead and, and contract with HTA to, for a maximum of seventeen thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Motion made by Elise Gafani, seconded by Elizabeth McKay. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. Item eleven, City of Blue Lake Arts and Heritage Commission Discussion and Action. At the September council meeting, it was requested that a discussion item be placed on the October agenda to discuss the Arts and Heritage Commission composition and the possibility of reducing the number of commissioners from seven to five. We are having a difficulty in getting people into that commission.
Before we get too deep into this, can I make, can I suggest that we, uh, reschedule this to our next council meeting? Because of the late hour. I feel like we could talk about this for another half an hour and then we still have three more, quite a few more items.
Well, we can look at the agenda and see what things we can.
Well, I think we're gonna have to also delay item twelve because we don't have our full membership here.
Well, I might suggest that we try to go forward with twelve just because, um, Chris hasn't been able to make any of his, um, his meetings, so maybe we could just make some adjustments so that those meetings don't get missed for another month.
I don't think it's fair to make adjustments without him here. I mean, he's gotta be a part of that conversation.
Well, he should be, but why don't we just, um, one, one item at a time, maybe?
All right, let's, let's, let's postpone eleven due to the time element. And then we have twelve, which is the
We all have to agree to this?
Yeah, if you wanna go through the remaining items and make a, and group a motion, if that makes sense, or if you want to.
Postpone eleven, twelve.
I'm on it. I don't mind making it five. We haven't met in six months because we don't have enough people. So I'm in favor of that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if we wanna do this.
I think we need to allow time for, for public comment.
Yeah, but let's just, let's just do this. Can we just do this?
We can, but we're gonna be here till ten thirty. Do we wanna do that?
Well, I don't think it'll take that long.
So I don't think it's gonna take an hour to get through that. I don't think, unless you're gonna talk a lot about it.
All right, so you'd like to continue with eleven?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we all seem to agree that we should reduce it to five?
Yes.
All right, so let's get, that's what I'm saying. So let's get any public input on reducing the amount of our commissioners to the Arts Inherited Commission to five. Lori?
I, Lori Poncey, um, why? Why reduce it to five?
Because we haven't been able to have a quorum. There's not enough people on it to meet.
Okay, so has, has anybody been promoting the commission? You know, actively seeking? And so with a, uh, a number of five people, is there a guarantee that that will always make a quorum? And will you always have five people?
It's easier to make a quorum with five than seven.
Three. Right, why was it, why, I, I guess my other question is why was it, it, um, why were seven people on the commission? Are all the commissions seven?
No, all the commissions are five, which, um, so I agree, I don't know why there were seven to begin with.
At the beginning, there was a lot of interest in this commission. I mean, there was, you know, like twelve applicants. We had to reduce it to seven, so that was one of the biggest reasons.
I wonder if there may have been some misunderstanding as to what the commission was gonna be doing.
Well, we have a lot of artists in this town and they were all excited about being on it.
Okay.
Things have changed.
So do people, do people go off the commission because it's difficult to make the meeting?
We don't. I can tell you why.
Yeah, yeah, there was.
Mandy Conperson, do you wanna discuss it?
No, we don't need to. There's no, there was no reasons given really, so.
Is that true?
There was.
Nobody gave a reason for resigning?
I thought there was reasons.
Yes, each one of them gave a reason for resigning.
Okay, can you share those with us?
Um, I can just say that it was because of, there was a lot of, um, negative backlash um, that pe- commissioners were receiving on social media. Um, people were being, um, stopped on the streets and, um, and commissioners felt that they were being badgered and, um, some felt that they were even being somewhat threatened a bit. And they chose to, um, not put themselves in that position anymore because of the negativity that they were experiencing.
So was there something about the makeup of the commission or the, or its purpose that, that cultivates that kind of, um, or you what?
I think it's the same issue that's cultivated a lot of the negativity. It was, it all came out because of the Affordable Housing Project and the commission's participation in art installations and, and looking at colors and things. They, they basically got pulled into that conversation, which has spurred a lot of the negativity that we see in our community. And so they chose not to be a part of that anymore.
Okay, and so that, that conversation about those, um, designs and plans, that's still in part of what they're, they're doing or, I mean.
We haven't had a quorum.
I guess my other question is, are, are commissions, um, only like-minded people? Do they, are they, you know?
No, it's quite a diverse.
Yeah.
That would be three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I say something? Um, I would just like to share that I, I feel like maybe some of the issue was, um, was partly because of the scope of, of what the commission was doing and a, and a misunderstanding. Um, I'm not sure the people really under, fully understood what the commission was designed to do. And so, um, I think going forward, it would be good if we had a little more clarity about their mission and their focus and, um, and found some way to, to be, um, I don't know, to, to pave, to pave a smoother path, um, essentially. And I'm not sure how that would go or what it would be, or I have no idea to be quite honest, but I feel like, um, as this commission, you know, goes forward with five members, that we should try to figure out a way to make it work better than it has in the past. So uh, I'd just like to propose that we keep that in mind and maybe bring it back for more discussion or have a work group with the commission at some point. Maybe have an ad hoc, um, committee of the council to meet with that commission and talk more about, about the issues that have ha- happened and how to not have those going forward.
I mean, there's a resolution that, you know, spells out what their, their jobs are. It's very, it's very thorough. So, you know, we have a copy of it here.
Well, I was curious why Weot culture is, um, is represented here, but none of the other tribes are mentioned that have historically been in Blue Lake.
Cause this is the, this is Weot territory.
Yeah, right.
And we'll cut and. And the council took a position early on about trying to build a better connection to the Weot tribe and to Weot culture and to recognize that in our community.
Okay, and this is not in, you know, any priority. This is not prioritized or anything. These are just the areas that they were, you know, concerned with. Um, is there any other public comments? Julie, you'd like to weigh in on the Heritage Commission, Arts and Heritage Commission?
Yes, I commented back at the last city council when we had applicants for the commission. Um, I'm just kinda, kinda reiterate a little bit on that really quickly and what I said. And I just feel like with the absence of this commission for such an extended period of time, um, we could really facilitate a lot of these individuals in our community and our other commissions that are really a necessity. And our economic, our parks and rec, our public safety, we really need those commissions strong. And we need them strong with people that wanna be involved and have the time to do that. I'd love to be one of those people. I'm a Zoomi zombie and I love you guys allowing that, but it allows you to have access to this process. But I just feel like we're, we always are, and I support the, um, to keep on agenda. I support shortening the, um, allotment of the commissioners down to five. I think that makes more sense, but does the commission make sense in itself? And if we're gonna have some excess dialogue on why we're at this weird, uh, junction and, and we wanna bring up the Weot land, yes, there was an individual on your commission that was considering, um, being very involved and then was just sort of missed by the fact that um, when we brought up the option of names, that they were only given so many and that's the side of the story and that's fine. But at the same time, then he's told explicitly through a specific email that this is Weot land and Manny just specifically said that. Excuse me, this is Willcut land. You guys know that? Draw from that, do some history. I knew that a long time ago. I've always cherished this land. I grew up on this land under my feet too, and so many of my generation.
Thank you for your comment.
Slu- past history is ridiculous. So I'll let it be that.
Your three, your three minutes are up. Julie, thank you for your comment this evening. Um, next comment, Ken Sawatsky?
Um, we had no problem with excluding, uh, the Weot tribes in their name. I support the tribes more as one of the tribes and not singling out and, and not trying anything to deal with. Same, well, that's not me. Um, get along very well with the tribes. And I was very miffed when, when, um, media, I never spoke to any of the people who, who that were on. Terminator driving up. And, and, and being the person, the first couple of people with, with reasons, we, we. And this, this is way above the law. It's called gas riding. Uh, if you want to work at meetings, you wanna name people, you think that's just great. These, these people are funny for any committee and, uh, you can always have you need to appoint people who wanna be on it, you can increase the points, but you don't want, you're not getting a, uh, you're not getting a, uh, filling your new floor with it because of the action we're taking with Matt. I want more clarity and I want understanding how that certain members, uh, view the city manager and those people that he can, the, uh, the behavior is unforgivable. And, uh, it's the reason why you have a lot of pushback. I did have a problem with people, forage myself, that I was applied, but I was crazy.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, seeing no other public comments, we'll come back to council for a vote.
I make a motion that we, uh, that we drop the, what does it say here?
Reduce.
Reduce the composition of the, of the, of the commission from seven members to five members.
Second.
Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to reduce the amount of commissioners that the Arts Inheritage Commission from seven to five. Is there any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
I know this sort of goes without saying, but given the volatile history of this, this commission, I would just like to say that, um, I hope we're not gonna have any, any more issues like that and just, just, I know that there's can be possibly some sensitive subjects, um, and areas visited by the commission. So, um, I don't know if, if we, if we could have some way to deal with that. Um, but we just need to, um, just be sure that as the commission, as a council sanctioned commission, that we're, we're conducting, um, all the meetings in a manner that, um, is okay.
All right, we're on item twelve, council liaison designation and reallocation of assignments and um, Angela Scholl had suggested that we wait until Christopher Edgar is here to do this. Because i- i- if he can't make meetings, then the person who is his, um, substitute should be making the meeting, correct?
Correct.
So.
But that's not been happening and, um, unless his alternates wanna take on all of his, um, all of his, uh,
Well, it's the public safety.
While we're on this topic, can I correct something? There's something that's wrong here. The redec, I am not the P? I'm not the primary, Angela is, so I'm not sure where this paperwork came from.
Oh, this might be the old one.
Cause we switched you guys, right?
Yes, so at least, can we correct that during?
Yeah, I might have printed up the.
This might be the incorrect one, yeah.
Okay.
Which I feel like, I mean, we still need to have him here.
Okay.
And the fact that he's
So Angela's.
Ill is not.
Are you the alternate?
No, no.
Chris is.
Chris is the alternate.
That was the only one we had changed.
So, um, we could change, we could not change any of his assignments, but may, maybe look at some of his alternates. So um, we could change, we could not change any of his assignments, but may maybe look at some of his alternates.
Um, well, I believe that isn't it up to the to primary to contact the alternate to tell them they're not going? So if if we could just state that as being true in our minutes or whatever.
Right.
And that we will shelve this until Chris.
Yeah.
Would fear that to actually adjust it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I would like it to be said, i- if you can't go, you should call your alternate.
Absolutely.
That's what I've been doing.
Okay. Um, so. Ask if any of his alternates want to give up their assignments.
Give up their assignment?
Well, it's a mad.
Change their.
Madiac to have this happen. So, you know, it's a, it's a bigger thing than just us four of us deciding this.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
Well.
We need to wait till.
I'm just trying to get somebody to the meetings.
I agree.
That's just the goal.
Yeah. All right, so we have to have a motion to postpone.
From going?
We go to meetings sometimes, but I'm not a liaison.
Right, okay.
Fair enough.
And some of the commissions are asking for their liaison. And I can't say, oh, I'm here to substitute for the person that's not here because I'm not.
No.
You're not.
Nope.
No, you can't.
Um, all right, we need a motion to continue this to the November meeting.
So moved.
So seconded.
Elizabeth McKay moved, seconded by Angela Scholl to postpone this item concerning the council liaison and committee assignments to the November meeting. Is there any further discussion from council? Any comment from public? Is Kent wanting to discuss this item?
Maybe.
Kent, did you want to weigh in on? We're.
What's what's doing? I I have no problem continuing that. I unfortunately, I just uh, Chris, I just didn't get the handle and supposed to notify somebody. Not here tonight. Said that very few of the city council people easily does not have the time or desire to tell these officials and uh, leave for important positions and if if any of you don't feel that you really want to be here or can't be here, then I highly recommend you resign.
Thank you for your comments. Item twelve is what we just did. Item thirteen, city council agenda review committee designee. Um, this idea, in order to move more effe- effectively, review and prepare meeting agendas, staff is requesting the establishment of an agenda review committee to be comprised of the city clerk, the city manager, and either one or two council members. The committee will review agenda items requests for consistency with the municipal code, the Brown Act, and council objectives. Um, you know, some of the things that have come up on that people want on the agenda may may just be questions that they need answered by staff, you know, it doesn't have to be an actual agenda item. And this is not a a precedent setting thing. Summer Dwardy and I years ago, and not that long ago, would meet with the city manager and look over the agenda and shuffle things around, so we liked which order they were in. So this is not something new, it's uh and, you know, we never, we never ignored people's um uh wishes to be on the agenda because we would call them and, you know, ask them what their concern was. And oftentimes, it was just kind of like a question of what was going on, and so we would answer the question and there didn't seem to be the need to have a, you know, whole discussion of it. So I'm in favor of this um idea and I'd be very happy to s- uh sit on this committee to review the uh agenda once a month. With or without another council person.
I would be happy to do that as well. All right.
Groovy.
Groovy status is attained, so um, yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, that's what it says right here, up to two council members.
There you are. Okay.
Okay.
So uh, we will open this up again to public comment and then we can come back and decide. Um, is there any other questions or comments from council about this?
Okay.
Uh, out to public for the, for the comment period, Lori Ponti and then um Lisa. And then Kent from Mexico.
Uh, Lori Ponti, so thank you, Adeline and at least for volunteering to be on this committee. My, my question about the committee is it was my understanding that um if a resident or person wanted to speak with or go through a council member, any council member regarding having something put on the agenda, um, that was, that was an option. So does this supersede that? That I I couldn't, I couldn't go to Elizabeth and say, hey, you know, I'm concerned about this, can you get this on the agenda?
It will be, it will go to a review committee.
So the review committee will have, the, well, so my request would, could be ignored or
No, you're.
Dismissed because, because it wasn't something that the review committee would want to have on the agenda? I mean, I guess.
Think it'll just be dismissed.
No.
No. I think if that, yeah, I don't think that's.
No.
I, yeah.
Well, but I mean, it's potentially, it could be just put aside because it wasn't felt deemed as, you know, a priority for the agenda. But I, or could, or could people's request for information on the agenda somehow be logged? Um, so that these are the, you know, these are the concerns, it's sort of like the public records um requests, you know, I would think that those were probably logged somehow in in city hall so that you know, they, it's at least written somewhere that it came in and it was acknowledged and it was either discussed or um dismissed or.
So our municipal code um states that any council member, any council person can have an item placed on the agenda. Um, it also says that any member of the public may request an item be placed on the agenda. Um, and um with the caveat that that item should go through city staff uh prior to going on to the agenda in case a simple answer um will, you know, from staff could solve the issue.
So the only thing that this is about is is actually assigning for having two council members as part of that group.
And and because our municipal code is the law, we can't do anything that contradicts the municipal code. So anything that happens with this committee has to also be in accordance with.
So it follows that. So it doesn't really change much of anything, except it just has a committee now as whoever was.
I think that's, that's what I understand.
Thanks.
Any other public comment, Lisa?
Hi, my name is Lisa Hoover, and um I guess that last thing was kind of confusing because when I read the the city municipal code that's in place states any council person can have an item placed on the agenda. Likewise, the public, but they did talk about talking to the city staff because some things can be dealt with and addressed, you know, in another forum, not on agenda. But back to the the fact that any council person, um they can have an item placed on the agenda. So the proposal for an agenda review committee sort of um I wasn't clear on that because it's not consistent with the city ordinance that's already in place. And it also um raises concerns that it could result in the lack of representation and equal voice of all elected council members. If you have a committee that's screening what's going on, going on the agenda, and that's how I read it. So I asked that the council object to the agenda review committee, so I wanted to make sure everyone who's elected official, if they want something to be on the agenda, that should be the bottom line inconsistent with the the city municipal code. So um what was just transpired was just very confusing because it sounds like you'd have two or three people that would review the agenda, but what about the other council people? I want to make sure everyone is heard that's on the council and to stay consistent with the the municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So do you want some clarification on how this normally works? Um, normally, what we've had is council requesting agenda items through the future agenda item process. This is a little outside of the normal process that we've been utilizing for years, and it was a little bit of an eye opener to me even reading the municipal code that a simple request for an item to be on an agenda is the actual process. It's not the normal process for um in other cities, um and it wasn't the process that was explained to me early on from our city clerk at the time. And in fact, when I gave her the municipal code and said, you know, April, this is what it says, why did we always follow this other process? She was actually surprised um with the language herself. Um, one of the issues that we have is these large packets. So getting, having an agenda review committee doesn't mean that items won't get on the agenda, but items may not get on the next agenda, or there may be an order of things. So tonight you saw, we had, we staff had created an agenda. We got several agenda item requests um on Thursday, which also included presentations, which meant we had to bump people, move people around. We had people scheduled, we had our auditor scheduled, we had our accountant scheduled. Um, you saw what happened tonight. He got, they got bumped and had to wait because we had another presenter come in. Um, so there's times where we need to look at these and review order or timeliness. Um, if something, there were items on this agenda that we could have gone through early on, maybe we could have bumped um a couple of these items to another meeting, or we could have asked for a second meeting. Um, we do have that, you have that council as an option. If we have a month where we have a lot of items, we've done this previously, it works really well. If we think we have um the need for a second item or meeting, we can do that so that we don't have meetings that go, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night and we're not putting people on hold, making presentations and making them wait here. So my intention with this committee is to also have a couple extra set of eyes on these agendas. As council, you also know what your objectives are. Um, what is priorities for council as you're moving projects forward? Um, which project should come up next? Maybe which projects could or agenda items could be moved to a later date as well. Um, so it takes the burden off of staff. Um, we've, you know, we've heard over and over tonight, um accusations of staff controlling um everything in the city and not being transparent and um sort of, I guess, micromanaging the city um on different levels. So this provides staff a little bit of cover as well and puts us back on the city council to make some of these decisions. And so that's what um what we as staff have talked about and are requesting.
Thank you for that clarification.
So what we do have a second meeting, then if our regular meeting is on the fourth Tuesday.
It's a second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
So then we'll have, so then we'll have a like a, an extra meeting on the two weeks from now.
We used to have our meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday.
Okay.
Before COVID. And then when COVID happened, for a while, we didn't have meetings at all. It was scary. And then we started, we found out about Zoom, so we, we all jumped on the Zoom bag, bandwagon, I bought a new laptop and every, everybody was fine. But at that time, things were pared down so much, we didn't have a, a skating rink, we'd hardly had a park and recreation happening at all. So one meeting a month was, was fine.
Right.
You know.
Well, I guess we don't have to talk about it necessarily.
No, but I'm just giving you a little history on that, but um, so let's see, we had one person in public. Um, Julie, would you like to weigh in on the um agenda review committee?
Yes, I will. I'll be quick and sweet. I will be as passionate as a red. Yes, it's been a packed agenda. That's great. I love that we can get these things dealt with. We've had a lack of commission meetings and that's fine, but at the same time, these things need to be brought up and discussed. Could things have been tabled till later? Yes, for instance, the biomass presentation, you know. I mean, and then we had to make a presenter wait for that. We already knew we had three presenters tonight. And we had to accommodate them all, so that makes stuff complicated and long. And I just feel like anytime that we are excluding or promoting the potential of excluding input to be prolonged isn't going to be productive. Um, sometimes we just have to slew through it and get it done, and that's okay, but it needs to be brought forward. It needs to be brought forward in a manner that's productive. And when we like things um get negligent in time, then then other things happen in the background. And we found that to be true. And so I, I don't think that we need to put any more restrictions than what our municipal code already has on. And I think we should just hold true to that and let it go. We're gonna go through tides of up and down, and that's okay. We need to maybe have those special meetings that are for discussion only items. I think that would be a good idea. If not, go back to two meetings a month. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, Kent Sawatsky. Kent, did you want to weigh in on the agenda review committee?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we hit so two point zero four point two zero two zero. D is, it's also quite clear that I would see how you, you know, view. Any member of the public may work on nine between on the agenda of a regular scheduled meeting of the Blue Lake City. They're gonna say, you can focus on sometime later. I, thirty days in advance, I've requested things to be put on the agenda, and yet I've been blocked by staff. I don't have just something that we should be addressed in a timely manner, I mean, I can read them probably. We try to be patient out there, and we do expect you to be there nicely. Don't expect to be touched on lightly, and I. But I have certainly done something, we have a thing, saying that you're not gonna have, which is on a regular schedule meeting. Then the timing matters. Many matters may be resolved or discussed by the cities, yeah, public. Sure, obviously, yeah, first you determine, well, here's the problem. They refuse to email to me. We don't want to talk to me. So, so you, and of course, it would be a good idea. I mean, maybe I'd look at clearance about the failure to give me some hearing. So uh, this, this seems both ways when you get accused of trying to command or do things. Being a gentleman, because that's exactly what you have to do. Or the committee itself, you've got your minimums covered, you need to have a determination by your attorney. Of course, you'd tell them to report as far as what it is. Fine, same going in, or please follow what it says. When I make, yeah, man, you, you guys can schedule, you want to think your own business, this is all forever. Well, my child's right, and so you should be careful, remember, child's right, things on the screen, thank you, my precious people.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
All right, back to council for the votes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I just want to just clarify. So it sounds like Lori had a lot of good questions which helped to clarify this. And then Mandy's comment helped clarify it too, but I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So it sounds as if um, comments and requests for uh agenda items come in all the way until the Thursday before a meeting, is that the deadline, is that Thursday before the meeting?
For council, it's Thursday. For the public, it's Wednesday. And packets have to be done by Friday.
Okay, and that makes sense because then things have to be posted on the website for all of us.
Seventy two hours, yep.
So in order to get all of that done, what you're asking is that uh not only are the, the city staff involved in this, but these, all these agenda items come forward or brought forward, and then some of them can be answered. Um, if they don't really need it to be brought forward to the, the meeting. And then the rest are all sorted on a, in a group where you will get to all of them some way, shape or form. It's just that sometimes they have to be prioritized because there's way too many things for simply one meeting, and that would be up to council to determine if it requires two meetings, an additional meeting to address all of the subjects. Is that how I?
Bingo.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Thank you for your comment.
And just for clarification, your municipal code allows for the agenda review committee. It's stated in your municipal code.
Okay.
What you're referring to, a, where it just says, delegate, delegated council person shall prepare an agenda with the city manager and authority.
I move to designate Elise Gafani and Adeline Jones. To serve on the agenda setting committee.
Seconded.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Shaw to. Appoint Adeline Jones, mayor and councilperson Elise Gafani to the. Agenda review committee. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes.
The council correspondence, um. The person who I corresponded with, who's here this evening, wanted this to be read. At the council meeting. It's up to the council whether you would like me to do that, or if this can be postponed in November. That's, you know, up to you. But that was the request made by the. The person who uh, I had email correspondence with. And I had to go through here and go one, two, three. Because it was all backwards. Yeah, the way it's, yeah, it's really tricky, the way it's done. But I think if. We, if you want me to read this, I can, or we can, you know, we can read this at the next meeting. I don't think it's anything really timely, but. Well, they've been sitting here the whole time. Are they waiting for this? Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, let's start. Um, so it starts with on Tuesday, September twenty six, twenty twenty three. From David Ponty. After attending tonight's city council meeting and following the suggestion of the mayor, I thought it appropriate to email while the meeting is fresh in my mind. I would like to acknowledge and thank each council member for their commitment to serve the city of Blue Lake residents. I also feel I must share my frustration at watching council members seemingly not understand your roles as leaders. And your jobs to direct city staff in their jobs. It is understandable that as part-time leaders, it isn't always possible to know the answers to every question. Asked at a council meeting, and my experience on school boards taught me that. It also taught me to be respectful of the constituents I was elected to represent. Even when I may not want to and respond to questions as soon as possible. The tone of many of the meetings I have attended or participated via Zoom have not been respectful to participants. And then seems to evoke disrespect back to the council. Why is that? Do you feel you truly have clear knowledge of the concerns of the majority of residents of Blue Lake? Do you believe those who do not contact you directly or attend meetings agree with the management of the business of the city of Blue Lake? So much time goes into meetings and correspondence from your constituents, and so many are annoyed and frustrated with dismissive responses or no response. The recent drive to bring in groups to show what a great place Blue Lake can be for recreation has. I should be, has not been presented to the residents of Blue Lake in a very clear way. How many areas of this city have a different district identity? Why are projects quietly changed, i.e. town square? And explanation is caused, and yet no visible accounting is given. How does this help cultivate growth and community within this very small city? There's potential for big change in Blue Lake and community buy in is essential. And I suspect. Potential developers, investors would want to see that support from the residents. My last question is in regard to financial disclosure of city revenue. Will income and revenue for twenty twenty three to date be available to the public? By the next city council meeting. I am surprised you don't review that or aren't aware of. And that information on a monthly basis. Thank you for your time, Lori Ponty. Adeline, you asked me to email with my question regarding Blue Lake, California Municipal Code Title Ten Parking and Traffic. Please read chapter ten. Dash oh four, stopping, standing and parking, paragraph A in reference to my question at tonight's meeting. What does the city manager do to notify owners of these items? That are violation of this code? What are the violation consequences? I would appreciate a response. All right, here's my response. Dear Dave and Lori, thank you for your email. I appreciate any and all correspondence from our citizens. At meetings by email or by phone. It's important to keep council meetings civil and congenial. Meeting protocols have to be adhered to or chaos ensues. I don't want that to occur at our meetings. We have had many town hall gatherings on both the Botawatt Community Project and the RV Park Plan. They have all been very well attended with a lot of citizens expressing approval of the direction of the, the city is taking. I thought it was interesting that among all of the comments made at last night's meeting, not one citizen had any idea of what they want to see in the Powers Creek District. Do we really want a large metal eyesore again to dominate the area, or do we want a thoughtful and well-planned RV park? Along with a mixed-use, low-income housing development. In the years I've been on the council, the unanimous decision is to have the latter. Concerning your question about city street parking, I'll have to do a bit of research on the subject. I know. There have been many cases that have gone to court over this issue, and they may supersede our parking ordinance. I'll defer to our attorney on that. Thank you again for your email and your attendance at our meeting. Sincerely, Adeline Jones. Okay, third. Uh, third, thank you for your prompt response to our email. This is from Lori. Having attended meetings, you refer, referenced regarding the Affordable Housing Project, Botawatt Community Project and RV Park Proposal. Not a project yet. It was very clear council and city staff have not acknowledged opposition by residents, only those of support from a minority. Last night, the council did not offer an opportunity to encourage those in attendance to give comments on what other ideas residents had for that twenty-two acre parcel. Would you refresh my memory as to when council have asked for public input? Have you considered a survey or vote, heaven forbid? From residents regarding these proposed ideas? The current state of the area is definitely an eyesore. I agree the council itself has shown majority, not unanimous, support for these two proposed ideas. Town hall meetings were, were presentations, not conversations. The questions and concerns residents have presented to the council multiple time, often seem to irritate members and staff. Does the council and city staff believe they alone have all the answers, or do they simply not want to be questioned? Since these two major proposals may be years down the road, why not work to gather support? By as many residents as possible to find the best future for Blue Lake. I believe there is a much more work, I believe there is so much more work ahead to accomplish this and possibly better ideas. Shouldn't there be backup plans? I have a few if you're interested. I ask this email to be included in the next city council agenda with other correspondence. That was three. Okay, four. Here is my response. Dear Dave and Lori, the Blue Lake City Council members are the visionaries for our town. We direct staff to carry out our vision. When the council learned that the state was mandating that our city provide forty-five low-income housing units, we. Charged our staff with finding a solution. The process started with rezoning the Powers Creek District to allow for multi-uses. This occurred at the planning commission level at several always public planning commission meetings. We have very little usable acreage for such a project in town, but plenty of land in the district. Danco Company has been very successful in jumping through the governmental hoops to make a project happen. The council and planning commission members toured Sorrel Place and the Apartments across from the co-op. In, to view for ourselves the work Danco does. While these projects are much larger than anything we would ever consider in Blue Lake, it gave us a good idea of how to. How a successful structure would look. We need housing in California. If the city does not reach the state's mandated amount of housing, the state can take over the management of a city. Out of the hands of its citizens and manage it themselves. This is not an idle threat. It occurred in a city in the Bay Area. The presentations by Storyland and the ones with Danco were a question and answer format. I attended all of those events. They were well attended and a majority of the people in attendance had favorable responses. It's interesting you ask for a vote. We had a small group of people who protested our water sewer rate hike, but when the tally was made, there was nowhere near enough people to stop the rating. The rate change. Similarly, when the city floated a sales tax increase, fifty-seven percent of the electorate of Blue Lake voted for it. I again, again, despite a small vocal minority at our meetings. I've lived in Blue Lake for forty-six years. Oh, yeah, that, oh, yeah, they, they identify themselves as having lived in Blue Lake thirty-two plus year reds in a blue lake. That's why I wrote this. I've lived in Blue Lake for forty-six years and I respect every citizen of this town. If you've lived here for thirty-two years or thirty-two days. Recently, I was at a memorial for Earl Eddy. This man moved here eight years ago and he and his wife immediately became active members of CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. And a year later. He began serving on the planning commission. This shows how a person can serve our city. I reiterate, at all meetings I've attended, not one person has come. Forth with any idea for our providing low-income housing or a better plan for the Blue Lake Powers site. That's because both plans we have put forth are thoughtful and exciting. I challenge you both to serve as one of our commissions, on one of our commissions. We currently have several vacancies. It's easy to complain and criticize at meetings. The hard job is to come up with ideas and solutions. Take care, Adeline Jones. That was four. Five, started out with this. And it was said, it's signed by David. Uh, interesting that you consider yourself and some council members visionaries. I am not too sure about that. You have, however, distinguish yourself as an outstanding scolder as mayor of the city of Blue Lake. This unfortunately does not always work with the citizens of your little town. The problems that confront Blue Lake long predate the current power structure. Unfortunately, the city manager with the sport. Your support has only worsened and obviously increasingly dire situation. The mismanagement of public safety, the industrial park Powers Creek District, APSP, GNE Project. Town Square and the Blue Lake Rancheria relationship, et cetera, makes one wonder whether a transition to a county jurisdiction would not be preferable. Given the general discontent of residents within the city, I would suspect that there will be more than a middling response to the circumstances as they exist. I expect that neither Lori nor I would be interested in serving on a commission under present leadership. We would rather work to see change that would better represent the interests of the majority of our neighbors. We will continue to take special interest in city. Actions pertaining to those, to these important issues. And then the last, now this isn't last, but here's item six. So then, at this, Mandy brought in her um. Her comment. Hi, Dave. I just read your email to Adeline and was a bit surprised that this is your viewpoint. I guess I'm a bit saddened to see that you feel so strongly against my position as city manager and the efforts that have been expended. To continue to uphold Blue Lake's status as a city. It was very eye-opening to hear your comments and to see your statement regarding the city folding up and becoming essentially a neighborhood. In the county. Coming from this standpoint, it makes more sense that you're advocating against development investment in the city. I'll make sure to include your comments in the council packet and look forward to reading them into the record. And then Dave at the end here. Thank you for letting me know you were including all emails Lori and I sent yesterday in the next council meeting minutes. It appears your response was taken as a personal front. That was not my intention. I'm not advocating against development, investment in Blue Lake. Not, but not every idea is the right fit. A major issue and area of frustration for me and so many. Is the lack of communication and transparency, particularly in regards to proposed projects. I am hopeful that now an open dialogue may evolve from your understanding of my position regarding growth in Blue Lake as a city. I look forward to seeing what comes. I'm happy to email anybody. All right, that was council correspondence. So, um.
Continue anything or keep going? Are we gonna keep going through everything?
Well, we can look at the, uh, I mean, the consent agenda unless someone wants to pull it.
I wanted to pull stuff.
Um, well, we have to have the warrants and disbursements, don't we, so that we can pay our bills?
No, that is, those aren't the bills.
Oh, okay. You want to pull the consented, something from the consented?
Yeah, I wanted to pull warrants and dispersments and minutes.
Oh.
And I. Probably have some questions about the quarterly financials, but um. I don't need to ask those tonight.
Well, do we want to postpone this for the next meeting, or do we want to?
I could probably, I could probably answer the warrants first and quickly. If you have changes for the meeting minutes.
Okay, uh, let's go forward then. Council agenda. So you would like to pull A, B, and C?
A and B, A and C. I'll let V go for now.
Okay, so we need a motion to uh, pass the financial statements and accountant report. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Angela Shaw to approve the financial statements and accountant report. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Just Kent want to talk on this matter?
Of course.
Kent, did you want to speak to the financial statements and accounting report? Do you have him? He's gone, okay. All right. Okay, uh, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. So we are now talking about the warrants and disbursements. What was your question?
Um, I'm wondering about SHN and if we can get um, like this engineering um, at the bottom of the first page. For fifteen thousand seven sixty-four. Um, do we know what that was for?
Um, that's probably work on the truck route. So we have several projects with SHN.
The other ones, the eleven thousand seven twenty-four is, is noted as truck route. Um, but this one just says engineering.
Um, so we have, we have a lot of projects with SHN, and I can get you that, whichever specific project it is, but it could be the library project. Um, it could be town square, it could be um, water and wastewater, um.
What check number was it?
It's down at the very bottom of the first page.
One, one, two, two, six, SHN, yeah. It's a big amount.
In point one, one, eight, four, one, zero. And then on the next page, we have a, a check to Blue Lake Rancheria for twenty-eight seventy-five. Is that?
That was their last billing for transit.
Okay. And then, um. Item number eleven, two, four, eight, um. Animal Shelter Services, seven twenty-one.
That's our contract with the um, Humboldt County Animal Shelter.
Is that a monthly bill? That's quarterly. I thought our contract was like eight thousand dollars. Annually. Was that?
The seven hundred and twenty-one.
It was.
Says September. Sounds like a month.
And then on the next page, FRMS for fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-one. Who's that?
FRMS.
Mm-hmm. It's the fifth line on the third page.
It's billing period October first, twenty twenty-three to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
It might be one of our tax um, payments, but we can find that out.
It's us paying taxes?
It's possible. It's one of our.
Yeah, makes sense. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the warrants and disbursements.
I motion to accept the warrants and disbursements.
Second. Motion made by Elise Gafani, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to accept the warrants and disbursements. Any further discussion from council? Public. Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. And the last one on the consent was the meeting minutes.
I have some additions mostly. Actually, I looked at the video, somebody gave me because when I started talking about they are. I looked at the video from the meeting and wrote down some stuff, uh, mostly. It's pretty much all about, um, item number five. The town square. So I just added a number of comments that were made that didn't quite make it into the minutes.
People, people that made comments? There wasn't any? Or additions to what they said?
Additions to what was said.
Oh.
In a, uh, mostly just additions to what was said. So, um. Let's see, I, I wanted to add to my comment at the beginning. Asking when the council would review the design.
What number are we on? Where are we?
Number five.
We're on page three of the minutes.
Thank you.
Town square construction, contract authorization.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to add that I stated that there's no designer discussion of the design since last mention of working with the architect in June of twenty twenty-two. Those would, could not be found in the city council records. And then, um. Under public comments, uh, I would like to add that Kent Sawatsky, in addition to the comments that are noted here. Um, also advocated. in addition to the comments that are noted here, um, also advocated for more council involvement in the process. And then to Andy Jones' comments, in addition to what is, is mentioned here, he advocated for visual representation and asked where he could access the plans. And then back to, um, back to council comments, um, after council member Edgar and McKay made their comments, council member Shul made a comment, um, asking if the same contractor would perform all the work and if the work could start while the council was reviewing its design. And then on the next page, um.
Oh, I have something on this page. There was a motion, it's, um, can I interject?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion here right below, so, uh, right below where council member Scavani, um, made a statement about Town Square. The next thing says motion, but it doesn't say by whom, and then it doesn't have a second.
It's, I think it died because of the second.
Uh, but we all voted and it passed. We voted and it passed, so.
That's on the next.
That's on page four.
Page four, top of page four.
It died because of the lack of the second. And so then you can ta- continue down.
The motion to authorize city manager to execute construction.
What, are you on the, on page four?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right here. This, this, at the top where it says motion.
Here, motion, authorize, but it doesn't say by whom, because it doesn't have a second, which I move over. It passed. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that should, that should be changed. That, that's important. Motions and seconds are important.
I did?
Yeah. Good, good eye there. Yeah, we need a motion and a second on that.
Yeah.
For sure.
So, um. Yeah, so Angela made that comment and then after that, um, Mandy proposed, uh, the possibility of a special meeting. I, um, to add to my comment, I think that's already there, maybe I, um, advocated for designer view to include the public. Um, Adeline, um, discussed dates for a special meeting and, um, and the motion, I think, should add another statement where, um, it should say city manager will bring the project back to council if the grant deliverables or design intentions will not be met or cannot be funded through another revenue source.
I'm lost again. Where are you?
Um, that, that last piece was the motion. The motion specu- specified that it would, um, that it would come back to council if the deliveral, deliverables, um, or design intentions would not be met or could not be funded through other revenue sources.
That was stated at the meeting, that right?
Yeah. So I printed it, I typed it out because they can't play on writing, so, um, if you'd want, probably you'd have to try to read.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three? We need a motion to approve those? With, with the corrections and additions, which is important with that first and second. All right, so you made a motion, Elizabeth?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Angela Shaw to approve the minutes of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion from council? Over to audience, public. Julie, did you have a comment about the minutes of August twenty-second?
I'll be quick. You've all been very patient with your public and your councilmen tonight. We just want to, um, step in where Elise is at. Yes, I do believe those corrections need to be made. You can review the videos if that's what needs to be done. Um, minutes are always going to be scripted in a way that are short and to the point. But also within scripting it to the point, make sure it is to the point. I noticed that a lot of the public comment that, yes, you are scripting what they are saying, but it's not actually the point they're prevailing. So just putting that out there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Kent's got his hand up too.
Kent Sowatsky, did you want to make a comment on the August minutes? I don't think he's there.
No, you, you, when normal process with someone speaks, you have your topic, the hands are lowered. So are we supposed to lower our hands on every topic out between things? That, um, that's why I keep seeing, I, I use having to lower my head as long as I'm. Do that for future, they probably do it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Reports of council and staff will go around. First of all, with council, um, Elise, did you attend any meetings?
Yes, I attended a meeting with, um, at RCA. And I don't really have anything to say about that. I do want to give an update on the website. Um, I spent a fair bit of time working on the website with Andy and figuring out what the problem was with, um, putting up the agenda and packet. And we discovered what the problem is and it's going to require a little bit of more work. He's going to do it before the next, he's going to do something. We're going to solve a problem one way or another before, um, by Friday. So that the next meeting that needs to be, um, noticed, uh, won't be affected. Um, but there's some decisions to, to be made about that. So I, I don't know. If somebody wants to weigh in on, on the website and how it's functioning, get with me because we.
I had a wondering spell that was.
Yeah. That wasn't it. That actually wasn't it. The size of the packet's not an issue. It was the way that page was programmed because there was a misunderstanding about how that page was going to be populated. He thought it was going to be an archive page and not an upcoming meeting page. And so, um, for all the commissions, except for the council, they, when you populate the agenda and the packet, it goes on the commission page. And, um, I think Andy got befuddled a little bit with all the details and all the pages. And he was thinking that the commission, that the council had the same feature on the council page, which we don't. We've always just used the agendas and minutes page as a, as an upcoming meeting page as well as an archive page. And so he programmed that to display after the date of the meeting, not before the date of the meeting. So we're having a conversation about how we want to change that and what we want to change exactly, and we'll figure that out. But I'm interested in, in any input that people have, people that use the website, not just to post things, but are used to using it, um, as a tool to be prepared for meetings and stuff. So if anybody wants to tell me anything, have at it. Um, also, uh, the calendar feature that is now a very integral part of the, um, website, um, requires an annual license, which is ninety-nine dollars. Um, and so that's the, that's the part of the website that we're interfacing with all the time now to make updates. That's what, part of what makes everything simpler than it used to be. So, um, just be aware that there's going to be an invoice coming for that ninety-nine dollars. Um, Andy's going to handle that. He's going to pay it and invoice the city so that you're only having to pay him and not, uh, the licensing, um, for that program. And might be all I have there.
Okay, thank you. Um, October twelfth, I went to an HWMA meeting at five thirty and, um, trying to think, okay, here we go. Um, so we had our audit report that night, which is why I asked this, you know, our auditor, because the same thing happened with HWMA. Theirs was, uh, late as well. And I did announce that we had another successful green waste day in Blue Lake, um, that previous Saturday. Um, and then we went into closed session. And that took up quite a bit of time. And then, um, I attended a Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting on October nineteenth. Um, interesting little factoid that the Indian Ola off-ramp, it's taking them sixty to ninety feet to go down to find bedrock so that they can put those major structures in place for the, um, overpass. So it's really taken them a long time to do that. That's why you see that crane there for the longest time. And so, um, we did a few things that evening. Um, we had a Humboldt County Transit Development Plan, a five-year plan, and that's when I mentioned that Blue Lake needs to be incorporated into that. Um, and then we, um, had our executive director's report. Uh, HCOG was awarded two point seven million doll- dollars for a housing development project in McKinleyville of fifty units and transit in McKinleyville. And that's all I have.
So this month's redec meeting, which is the Redwood Economic Development Council, uh, there was a presentation from Amanda Hickey and she is the Director of Research and Policy for CCRP at Cal Poly Humboldt. CCRP is, uh, California Council on Rural Policy. And in essence, what she reported on, um, well, also she is the project director. So she's, she has her director job at Cal Poly with CCRP. She's also the project director for SURF, um, which is the, uh, Community Economic Resiliency Fund and also known as RISE. The acronyms are incredible. Um, the resilient, inclusive, sustainable economy. It's like this whole thing. Um, but in essence, um, so the SURF region, just as, just because of the point of clarification, is Delnor, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. And then what RISE does is it, just it, uh, works with community members, it works with partners, it works with whoever really wants to be involved on, um, in essence, creating sustainable economies. So what is a sustainable economy? Um, what is the goal of RISE? What is the goal of SURF? How can, you know, Joe Q Public participate and be, um, and be, uh, you know, a participating member of this group? So she went through all of that and in essence, there's, um, there's a SURF, C E R F, website and, um, there's, there's a whole litany of activities that, that people can participate in. I sit on the SURF council, um, as a part of redec, but also a part of my, um, my nine-to-five-ish job. Um, so that was, it was really interesting to just kind of get that recap. Additionally, Greg Foster showed, um, some graphs on growth. And so, um, in essence, there was, there was a couple of graphs, one on labor force growth and one on employment growth. So between, um, between August and September of this year, it looked like there was an incredible amount of growth in both the labor force and employment markets. But really, when you kind of look at it, it's, it's really attributed to the back-to-school effect. So we have all the students moving back in. All the students are now, you know, workforce eligible and then they get employed. But the big picture really was the growth from the same period last year to this year. And really, it was a very, very, very small growth, um, one point five percent in labor force growth and only a half a percent in employment growth from the same time last year to this year. And so there was, uh, there were some really, some kind of, some discussions about that, but, um, really, it was more just of the, of the, um, overall state report and I think that was it.
Yeah. Okay.
I went to the, um, Economic Development Commission meeting and, um, locally here for Blue Lake. Um, Abundance is going to be closing its doors. Um, and so if you want anything, go now, quickly. I'm not sure.
I think it's the end of the month.
Tomorrow's our last day. Tomorrow's the last day, okay? And, uh, so some ideas that are coming in are, um, to possibly do a little grocery, um, and there's some community members in, interested and the property owner is interested in, uh, putting something else in there. Um, there was an ad hoc committee created with Kelly and Roxanne, um, to talk about, you know, how to possibly promote this into something that benefits Blue Lake. Um, let's see, and the Powers Creek area, um, working on master planning the whole area. And, um, Taylor Way, we have Dan Burden who's going to do a walkability. We were given a grant for that. Um, the Chamber wants to up its game. Uh, they don't want Fanny Mary Day to just be the only thing that they really focus on all year. They really want to start looking at what other chambers do, like Arcata, and be more active. They want to partner with Justin. Uh, have a community calendar and banners and just, you know, really, um, have business owners in the area, um, feel that they are being benefited by the Chamber. Um, so it's a more symbiotic relationship. Um, we had some very successful events happen, the Oktoberfest and medieval. Um, dance has been postponed. There's ideas of having a blacksmith and some trade. Um, people come and do trade work, uh, lessons for people here, um, in woodworking. Sarah Fine Stone's interested in getting a blacksmith in here. Um, having events at the museum and the horse story tour will be happening. Um, that was Parks and Rec. Um, let's see, so they, they are renting the facilities to, for, uh, volleyball, is it, or basketball? Basketball. Um, so NPA is renting the facilities regularly, uh, for their school. The kitchen's done. Um, there will be, in the Town Square, there will be, uh, construction happening in the spring. Um, they're applying for more money because, um, everything's expensive. More expensive than it was when you got the grant. Um, let's, what else? Um, that's about it. And then I didn't have a, did I miss anything important? Oh, Delarte is in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Um, so that was put on a future agenda item. Um, and, um, I didn't go to a League of Cities. There was nothing. But I am going to be doing a webinar with them on the new laws impacting cities.
Exactly, the new Brown Act.
Yes.
Stuff.
Yeah. It does.
Yeah.
How exciting.
Brown Act stuff. Very, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The Chamber of Commerce meeting, did they have one?
Uh,
so, maybe they didn't have one.
Maybe they didn't have one. Marvin was in, Marvin was gone.
Yeah.
It's been, um.
Hmm.
Okay. Traveler extraordinary.
Good.
I know, right?
Okay. Thank you for your reports, council persons. Um, the city manager report, you mentioned the commercial kitchen is done at Prash Hall, that's part of her report. The RV Park and Campground Development Plan is being ready for release, which we voted on last time. It's date card for a cap at a grant, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, work identified in this has been completed. The horse arena, tennis courts, baseball, softball. Town Square Grant Project was released for construction. The bidding date was August seventeen. You already mentioned. That are new. ADA parking at the Town Square, um, the state skate program and bike park ongoing. The city infrastructure, the library improvements. Work continues on the architecture burial removal project at the library, um, funded through the City Community Development Grant. The Truck Route Study and Design. Work continues on the Truck Route Project. A draft plan is being used to conduct environmental and cultural studies. Dan Burton, as you mentioned before, has been contracted to help us with that. Taylor Way improvements, the city has received a grant from HCOG. Hired Dan Burton to complete a street design for Taylor Way. He had some good ideas for that. He showed me a few. The design incorporates speed control measures, gateway installation, that kind of thing. And the FEMA water tanks funding, the city submitted a funding request to the FEMA hazardous, hazard mitigation program to replace the city's two Redwood water tanks. The city has been preliminary awarded under the program and is working with FEMA staff to answer, uh, RFI's. We're, we're. Request for information, I was like, I know what an RFP is, but uh, ref- request for proposal, this is RF, ref- request for information and to provide additional project details as requested. This project has been ongoing, no significant changes have occurred. And policy updates and studies, the housing element update. Staff have completed, has completed the final draft of the housing element. The state has received the submittal and is in the final stages of review and comment, staff is working closely with our HCD representatives, has questions arise through the review process, ongoing.
So on the, I just want to, any commission packet, it's in the, or, and it said that receive counts on September twentieth from the housing. So is that um, is that information something you can, you have in a PDF that you can put on the website so everybody can see it?
Um, I don't know, Gary, uh, that's Gary's purview, our city planner. He handles all of the uh, back and forth with HCD, and then he formulates the information to go to the planning um, commission for consideration, because there's some some aspects of the, the comments and requests from HCD that are under the turvy of the planning commission, looking at zoning and um, possible upzoning um, to meet HCD's requirements, so that'll be something that he brings forward with planning commission type of meetings.
You could use, you could take your packet for the, the medium sixteenth and just pin up with that.
I don't know that that will be the final packet though.
If we uploaded for the sixteenth, meaning that was canceled, that would still make that available to the public to read. The information that would have been in that pack.
Sure. Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, he might be revising, by now, the information, I don't know. If, if he has some good, new information, he might have with that amount of time going by, I don't, I, I'd have to divert Gary on that.
Before we adjourn, what do you wanna talk about, but now we're gonna pay the sheriff's invoice for?
Well, I think we are on future agenda items at this point. So um, I wrote a real heavy resolution. Um, I think we also need to talk about a December calendar, because the fourth Thursday and Tuesday in December is the day after Christmas, so we may wanna do it the weekend the week before, or maybe the twelfth, I don't know, looking at calendars for December. Um, and then you wanted to discussion of the Elise's, I want you to say, but for future agenda?
No, I meant for, um, because our, we're gonna be in default of our contract after the thirtieth if we don't pay that bill. And um, and it seems like if we don't, well, this is our law enforcement, if you accept, we're gonna pay that bill.
We, we can't, we can't make a motion on it, and I haven't asked a bit of agenda.
It's not a motion, it's not a motion, it's, it's a, it would be a motion, I'm I'm just saying, do we wanna let our, do we wanna let our law enforcement um, contract go into default, or are we gonna pay that too? That's a decision for the council, I, I know Andy's holding on that, within the hope that something is gonna shift, but it doesn't look like anything is gonna shift for maybe a year and a month.
But what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, this isn't an agenda, I don't want to discuss it like this.
I know, I agree.
They were allowed to. Well, you know, I have an emergency meeting then, a special meeting to make the decision. That's a possibility, we're gonna let Manny decide what to do with our law enforcement contract. I think it's a pretty important question that we need to address upon the thirtieth, October.
Well, his letter says for the month of July to September thirtieth, right? So we're, we're gonna pay you for that, we're gonna be, it was due on the first.
October, oh, we're in the, at the, after the thirtieth, October. And our contracts, they're really just the three months previous. They know us, yeah, um, or do, October first. Um, do payment for services rendered for the previous three months, three months is due, and then ten, thirty days later.
Oh, I see, and thirty days after that.
And if we don't pay that, they can terminate the contract immediately after we go in. I have the contract here, if anyone's.
Does, does our payment refund the increase?
Yes.
Apparently it does, because it's seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars is due.
As we, we have the money in the supplemental law enforcement services fund.
I just don't know if we're, I, I'm confused, I don't know that we can do this unless.
I think what you would wanna have a special meeting to discuss it, if you're gonna go that route, so that you do it properly.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's due by the end of the month, you know, we have to have a meeting on the thirty-first Halloween, will it cost you?
Why, why, why couldn't we have a meeting before that? Why would we not have a before that, that's, that, the trick or treat here to my neighborhood would be mad, I'm not fair, just saying.
Uh, Monday, the thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
And that one is due?
That, um, it's due.
It's due the thirty first, that lasts for a year and a month typically.
Yeah. Um, well, contracts is thirty days.
Well, uh, Monday works for me, Monday, nine, ten, minute?
Yep, Monday night.
Six, six-thirty, okay?
We put it at six? You wanna push it back out now?
Well, let's make it six-thirty since it, because six-thirty, nine, it was due to six-thirty. And indeed. If, if we're not gonna make this payment, then we need to have an alternate plan.
Right, well, that's something that we have to discuss at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So special meeting on October thirtieth, six-thirty?
I don't, you guys can put together an ad hoc if you wanted to have some conversations, what options, and ideas.
Because we even do that. It's, you know, we're, we're, we're making a decision, and it's not agenda, I say, that's my concern. That's why I think we need a special meeting, that if we wanna do an ad hoc that night, Monday night, we can decide that. But that's.
I'm wondering, because you have a law enforcement, it's not, you're not taking action. An ad hoc is, you're forming.
I think this is a, an issue that's very um, very critical to our community. And I don't think we should address this in an ad hoc committee, this needs to be an open meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is you have, have an ad hoc, you're talking about options and ideas prior, and having a, a discussion.
Priorities.
It's hard to have a negotiation discussion in, in a format like this.
Yeah. But well, the only other thing we could do, and I've seen this done before, is that but this usually is done at the beginning of a meeting, when we have an agenda item, that the urgency of the agenda item makes it so that we have to put it on the agenda, it's an urgency item, which is could be considered an urgency item. But we usually have. Yeah, but usually you do that at the beginning of a meeting when there's the agenda. The need to take action arose since the posting of the agenda, that's.
Well, the other way we could look at this is that if we pay the invoice, we're running ourselves out of three months to work this through. Right, if we just pay the invoice, we got three months to evaluate any options we might have before we run out of our our law enforcement monies. And um, and everything stays in effect, and we're not running out against the deadlines.
But that's why we need that special meeting on Monday night.
Or we just decide right now to pay the invoice.
Well, what you could do is you could pay the invoice with up to your, you have a budgeted amount for law enforcement, if we budgeted the, the current contract rate. Um, if you paid this, the only thing that I would be concerned about is paying this, tying you to accepting that contract increase, and I still am advocating against that. Um, but that it doesn't preclude you, you haven't expended your whole budget when you pay that for that, as your quarterly. I guess is one way to look at it.
We, we budgeted a hundred and forty-six by twenty-three, so we have plenty of money budgeted for law enforcement.
For the year.
For the, that's the, right.
Right, but for this one amount. But it's not part of like our warrants and disbursements, and you know, that's what concerns me, that it's just a.
Warrants and disbursements are already paid.
You're making a decision about paying something that hasn't been.
We already received the services and we already owe them money.
Well, we, that's, I mean, that's the point of contention, is the value of that service, is what's being questioned.
I understand. So you think that we can, we can make a motion to pay this, or?
We direct, you can direct staff.
You can direct staff to take this amount of money out of our budget.
Especially on our existing con, the, the, the contracted amount that we adopted in our budget. And if you're already authorized to spend that money, this is almost, it's more, but it's, you could look at it that we haven't expended, gone beyond our budget.
That's true, it's a budget item.
In this holding place for my conversation, but not tying you to acceptance of that contract increase.
Do you know the amount?
Yeah, it's like seventy, seventy-eight, well, there's the exact amount there.
Um, alright then, we, we so direct you to do that then.
And that's within our purview without?
Yeah, because it's already in the budget.
It's already been budgeted. Okay, I'm not authorized to go beyond that budget.
Right, okay.
So I advise you somehow to make some further decisions.
Which I think Carter learned it. So that's where we have to do a special meeting?
I don't think you need a special meeting, but I think that we should have an ad hoc um, to start discussing this, because like I said, there's, there's not, this is a really comfy forum, I think, to have like this and it needs to be a brain power session.
So do, do you want me on Monday night still?
No.
I don't think I do. Yeah. So for future agenda items, I'd like to put that um, Phil Shirley's niece has asked for the city of Blue Lake to create a, a proclamation for Phil Shirley Day, which will be in February, one birthday. And we're forth, and so she's going to be here at the next meeting with the proclamation.
If, you know what day it is?
Is she coming to present the proclamation, or is she talking to someone who's got the idea?
She has an old written out there?
Yep.
Wow. Well, we have a Carla Maso Clemente Day in December. His birthday.
I don't know how we celebrate it.
Yeah.
Alright, seeing as there's no, a further business, we are adjourned.
We're adjourned.